I would like to call this meeting of Tacoma Park City Council to order. Can the clerk please call the row?
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher.
Present.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
In a place to be.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all for joining us tonight. Tonight on the agenda, there are no changes to the agenda, but we will have an opportunity to honor Lee Jordan Day, along with a public hearing on traffic calming for the Second Avenue Speed Hump, as well as a presentation from our Board of Elections regarding the 2022 election report and debrief. We'll also have voting sessions on a single reading ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the city attorney's contract, as well as a consent agenda involving appointments to the Arts and Humanities Committee, Board of Elections Committee, the Emergency Preparedness Committee, Ethics Commission, Grants Review Committee, as well as the Sustainable Maryland Committee. We'll also have work sessions tonight on traffic calming involving Second Avenue Speed Bump, an overview of the traffic calming and sidewalk request process, as well as a presentation from our subcommittee on the recommended board and committee appointments. In terms of our...
I'm sorry, Mayor. I really don't mean to do this, but I have a pointed order about the agenda.
Sure.
I thought we were going to do something else, too. I thought we were going to do something else as well regarding other things. Just curious, because we had said we were going to... I don't know if there's an email landing or something. I'm just asking.
Other things regarding... Oh, no.
All right. Sal.
So I'm going to quickly go through upcoming agenda. So for March 1st, we'll have a legislative update. For the record, we'll have a Women's History Month proclamation, as well as a presentation on the county presentation of the Mapping Segregation Project, a voting session, the first reading ordinance approving installation of traffic calming on Second Avenue, as well as a... Well, we have a consent agenda, a second reading for the consent agenda for the boards and committees appointment.
No, it would be the appointments that will be discussed tonight.
Tonight. Thank you. As well as the work session for the temporary street closures for events at Laurel Avenue and Anne Street, as well as the FY-23 Budget Amendment Number Five and Stormwater Budget Amendment Number Two. On Wednesday, March 8th, we'll have a legislative update, voting session, the second reading ordinance approving installation of traffic calming on Second Avenue, first reading of FY-2023 Budget Amendment Number Five and Stormwater Budget Amendment Number Two, as well as a consent agenda item, resolution approving street closures for the Old Town Business Association and the Tacoma Langley CDA. We also have a tentative work session around the procurement of police in-car video cameras, as well as a discussion on council priorities. I would like to remind my colleagues in prep for the council priorities discussion on March 8th. So please make sure that you've reviewed the council priorities and submit any edits that you've had based on the discussions that we had during our retreat. Next, on Wednesday, March 15th, the council will have its regular meeting, legislative update, as well as a presentation on the minor master plan preliminary recommendations, as well as a voting session. And that would be the second reading of FY-23 Budget Amendment Number Five and Stormwater Budget Amendment Number Two, single reading ordinance authorizing procurement of police in-car video cameras, as well as continued work session discussion on council priorities. I know, there's a lot, huh? So now, I have the pleasure to be able to read a proclamation in honor of Lee Jordan Day in Tacoma Park on February the 23rd, which is tomorrow. Whereas we celebrate Black History Month, we take note of the life and accomplishments of Lee Jordan, one of the most influential residents in Tacoma Park history and... Whereas his work with youth, including the formation of the first integrated sports program in Montgomery County, Lee Jordan as a mentor, role model, and inspiration across racial lines, leaving an incredible, I'm sorry, indelible mark on generations of Tacoma Park's children, both black and white. And whereas as a leader and advocate on behalf of Tacoma Park's African-American residents, he played an important role in the foraging of a resilient black community in the face of racial discrimination and economic challenges during the period of segregation and the decades that follow. And whereas while a custodian in all-white Blair High School from 1935 to 1946, and then at Tacoma Junior High until 1973, Lee Jordan, affectionately known as Mr. Lee, ignored racial distinctions and as a volunteer began coaching white boys to play sports. And in the meantime, organized teams for boys from the black community across Tacoma Park. And whereas Lee Jordan deliberately and successfully overcame racial divisions by integrating black and white players on the same sports teams, and in 1953 also welcomed girls onto previously all-boys teams as part of the pioneering Boys and Girls Club he founded. And whereas students under Mr. Jordan's guidance gained confidence, improved their skills, and learned leadership to the point that one of them, Sonny Jackson, enjoyed a long baseball career in the major leagues. Others, such as Morgan Wooten, the legendary coach at DeMatha High School, followed in his footsteps or became school principals, and Tony DeVal became Tacoma Park Police Chief. And whereas Lee Jordan's work to break down racial barriers was recognized as a preliminary, as a primary influence in the peaceful integration of Tacoma Park schools after the Supreme Court ruling, and many of his players went on to fill the baseball, basketball, and football rosters at the newly-integrated Blair High School in subsequent years. And whereas Mr. Jordan advocated on behalf of the black community for city amenities such as streetlights and paved roads, and led successful campaigns for the playground where black children could play ball and families could gather, and for the construction of the Hefner Recreation Center, which became a gathering place for African-Americans in Tacoma Park and nearby communities. And whereas in recognition of Mr. Jordan's life, the new athletic field at Tacoma Park Middle School was named in his honor in 1981, and he was posthumously inducted in the Montgomery County Human Rights Hall of Fame in 2006. And whereas in 1983, the city of Tacoma Park proclaimed February the 23rd as Lee Jordan Day to mark his accomplishments. Now therefore, I, Talisha Circe, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, do hereby proclaim February the 23rd a day to be honored each year as Lee Jordan Day. So thank you all so much as we are recognizing Mr. Lee Jordan and all of the wonderful things that he has done in our community, not only as it pertains to providing recreational services for so many children in our community, but his advocacy as it relates to racial equality.
Mayor, we do have the filming, film airing this coming week, weekend. I don't have the information right in front of me, but you do?
I do. Yes, we do. Everyone, all together. So yes, Tacoma Park, there is a Tacoma Park African-American Oral History Project, a film and discussion that will be happening on Sunday, February the 26th, from 3:30 until 5:00 p.m. At the Tacoma Park Community Center Auditorium, right here on Maple Avenue. And they are showing that they call him Mr. Lee film. So I want to thank Historic Tacoma for putting on this event and want to encourage people to please come out and learn more about Mr. Lee.
And Mayor, I just wanted to say, I planned to attend that event, and I spent a lot of time on that field. Eleven uninterrupted seasons of pre-K soccer on that field. So I would like to say something in case anybody cares, if anybody's watching that's associated with the committee. I do plan to attend, and I'd like to say something nice.
Thank you.
That must have been a long time ago.
No, they're eleven and nine. Man, that was not that long ago.
Oh, no, he wasn't playing soccer.
Wonderful. Well, again, we're very grateful for Mr. Lee and all he's done for the community. So let's definitely celebrate Lee Jordan Day tomorrow and come out to the fun festivity on Saturday to learn more about Mr. Lee. And with that, do we have Ann available for our legislative update? Wonderful.
I am here. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Wanted to give several updates for you all tonight. First and foremost, to know we're going to change up the process related to bill review, and we will be distributing an updated bill chart by Monday morning each week. Give everybody a little more time to look through the bills that have been flagged that may be of interest. The request for funding for the library is continuing to move forward. City staff has filled out a required fact sheet. That's just the next step in the process. And there's a deadline of March 7th for those things. We've gotten, are in already, which is great. And then it'll be like the couple of weeks after that where they'll start making decisions about funding... They'll make their funding decisions for the districts. So that's moving. This Friday, the mayor is going to be testifying in support of the Just Cause Enabling Bill, Just Cause Eviction Bill. And that's being sponsored by Delegate Janelle Wilkins. And she and I are probably going to touch base tomorrow, just to make sure we're on the same page on, for everything. But you're all signed up, Mayor. The, this evening, at some point, after I had to get on a 5:30 meeting, the subcommittee in, one of the subcommittees in the House took up the unlawful restriction, unlawful restrictive covenant bill. And so I need to go back and watch it after I'm off of this. So to let you know if that got voted on or amended and moved. So I'll report on that after I watch that this evening. And then I know that Delegate Charcutian has been working very hard on her Safe Roads Act. And we're starting to make the rounds to members of the subcommittee where that bill is and make sure everybody is having whatever concerns they have addressed. I know she's been working a lot with the department on amendments to make sure that the bill, address, so that amendments to take care of the department's concerns, but certainly maintain the integrity of the bill. And those are the things right now. As we, as we are about to hit halfway, Saturday technically is 45 days, so we're almost at halfway.
Awesome. Councilmember Small.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just wanted to say again, I'll probably say it longer during my actual time. Thank you, Ann, for being so kind as to take time out of your wildly busy schedule to sit with me for a little while. And if you need people to do the regular stroll thing that would happen at the levels, I'll go with you. So.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ann. And yes, let's definitely touch base tomorrow, because I know that we were going back and forth on the testimony for Just Cause. And I know that I'd sent you a note about a county-level bill around first right of refusal for commercial properties for properties that may become available for, commercial properties that may become available for sale within transit-oriented development areas. And so I did hear back from Delegate Taveras around, at least her last version of the amendments. And I'll share that with you, but I don't know if we've heard anything on the Montgomery County side at all about...
So I was, I had sent an email to delegation staff in Prince George's. I'll go ahead and tomorrow make sure that I reach out to the Montgomery County delegation staff and see where they are as well.
Okay, great, great. And I'll share with you what Delegate Taveras shared with me today.
Yeah, and I'm curious about that, and you may have some knowledge about the interplay between the two sides of park and planning on this that I don't. But in the, in the long run, it's my understanding that the codes on, in particular on transit-oriented development, sort of mirror each other with regard to what the requirements are zoning-wise. And so I'm, I'm just curious about where this bill fits in the context of the sort of hard code issues about, like, having a storefront property as a required development and verticality and all those sorts of other things. Because at least on one side of the street that I live on is very different, if it's the case.
I will inquire about that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll look, too, but I didn't know if maybe you knew.
No, I don't.
I will say, because on Sunday I was able to participate in the, the last-minute bills, because I think a lot, this particular one is a last-minute item that Prince George's County's delegation was putting together. And to your point, Councilmember Small, they have been trying to make some things like bids. So trying to move by-county bills towards bids that could really help, particularly on the Ward 6 side of things, where you're talking about Langley Park.
Well, because there's some layering there because of the way they have previously just layered other things on top of each other, and enterprise zones and empowerment zones.
All of that stuff. Yep. So I know that Delegate Taveras has been really trying to get some bills moving forward that would allow for things like the establishment of business improvement districts, that would allow for...
That's a pain in my existence. That makes me happy.
That would allow for, and I was actually, I testified in support of the first right of refusal for commercial property purchase by counties. I want municipalities to be in there. It was in there, and then they, they are mending it out, and I want it back in there. So I'm trying to talk to, talk to the folks about getting that included. Because what often happens is commercial properties in transit-oriented development areas change hands a lot, and a lot of times, you know, local governments are not...
Depending on how long it takes for them to actually finish the product.
And local, local governments are not fully aware that these properties are changing hands, and these properties could serve, in many cases, greater community needs, like schools or different types of business enterprise incubators to try to maintain small businesses in your community, recreational centers, those kinds of things. But quite often, they change hands before anyone ever knows that they were even up for sale. So that is one, one bill that, you know, if there is some traction, it is by-county. So there's Montgomery County, and there's Prince George's County. But if that is something that could potentially move forward, it could have some, some interesting implications, particularly for segments of our city that border Tacoma Metro, the Purple Line stations in Wars 5 and 6. It would provide us with a little bit of a lead time and understanding when properties are exchanging hands and how we may be able to jump in if the circumstances allow to obtain those properties for community purposes. So it's a really interesting concept.
It also would promote accountability in their actual organization that is supposed to be for economic development, which is, there's a lot going on there.
Yeah, no, that, it's, it's some really, really interesting things. But again, they were last minute. There's not a lot of details in these bills, and I don't know if they're going to go anywhere. So, Ann, you know, I think that's the hard part with a lot of these, these county-level items, like not quite knowing where, where they may end up.
Well, there's a tendency to mention that there's also, just because of the elections happening this fall, that that maybe led to, you know, some good ideas, but they just came up late in the process. So, you know, having, having some debate about them now, even if there's not time for them to move, may set them up really well for next year.
Yeah, and they, they explained, or at least on the Prince George's side during their public hearing, that they had some issues with staffing of bill writers. And that was another reason why they didn't have bill writers available to kind of get some of these items moving. So that was also part of the rationale provided why a number of these items were late files. Councilmember Dibala.
Yes, speaking of bills that hopefully are going somewhere, the energy efficiency targets for low-income housing, Delegate Charcutian's bill, it's coming up for a hearing on the House side? House side. On March 2nd. So can we please to have testimony going in for that? Thank you.
And just, just remind me, for Delegate Charcutian's Safe Roads, did we submit something? We did submit something on that. Okay, okay. And are we likely going to need more folks to kind of go down and testify on behalf of that?
I, I'm, I've got a meeting set up with the chair of the subcommittee, the motion for the subcommittee to sort of feel out, you know, is the work the Delegate Charcutian is doing, you know, is... Working with the department, is that going to work? Or, you know, do we need to be lobbying the, the members to get it through? Bills can go either way, certainly in Annapolis with that. Sometimes if things get worked out, they just kind of sail through. But sometimes they still need a lot of lobbying. So that's my meeting with Delegate Love, and I will report back and, you know, potentially take the Councilmember Small up on his offer.
I was also going to say that if Councilmember Watson would consider also going, because New Hampshire Avenue along that whole corridor. And then also, if, if you do have some time, you should consider it as well because of the intersections the state highway have on your...
Yeah, I would be happy to do that. I was, I was just wondering if that would be valuable. How do we, yeah, can, if somebody can advise me how, how effective and how useful that would be to have all three of us.
So I think, I, I, after I find out, sort of do a little more intelligence gathering about, you know, what the, what the traction is that the bill has right now, and then be able to, you know, either set up some meetings with council members, I mean, I'm sorry, with, with the subcommittee members in the legislature, and, you know, try to see if we can't kind of stack them. It's, it's, we're getting to the part of, point of session where it's difficult sometimes to nail people down for specific meeting times. So it also can be spending some time walking the halls, finding people, grabbing them, and, you know, talking to them for three or four minutes about, you know, why this bill is so important. But I will report back after I talk to Delegate Love.
Great, great. Thank you.
I see no more lights. Thank you so much, Ann. Happy to hear that we are halfway there, which is wonderful. But that means this, this may be the bit of a lull before the storm, where we kind of need to cram through a lot of things towards the end of session. So thank you so much for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
So next on our agenda, we have a public hearing on traffic calming at Second Avenue Speed Hump?
Right. So we do have one person signed up to testify on Zoom. I've forwarded two public comments that I've received by, by mail or phone. And I don't know if there's anyone here who wants to testify.
Wonderful. Do we have any members of the audience that would like to testify as it pertains to the Second Avenue Speed Hump? Great. May I join the jury?
I'm not addressing just that speed hump of all the ones at Tacoma Park. I've been here for 39...
And years now. It's a form of gentrification. I can see where all the rich white people moved in. That's where they got the speed humps and the bump outs, et cetera, et cetera. And I, and I, I'm sick and tired of paying my tax dollars to pay for it. I do get a discount, which I won't this coming year, for my property taxes, which I'm happy about, but I'm not happy that I have to pay the full amount this year. But I really, I find it abominable. And I, and I think, especially the bump outs. And my car, I have an old 2011 hybrid car, and I have, the struts are all messed up from going over these damn speed humps. They weren't necessary. They're not necessary. If you, I, if, I don't hate children. If you have children, hold their hands. When I was growing up, I'm 75 almost, you'd hold your child's hand when you crossed the street. I don't understand why people, that children have to play in the middle of the streets. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members in the audience that would like to speak to the Second Avenue Speed Hump? Okay. Any virtual?
Yes, we have someone on the line now. Abby, could you hear us? Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. So we did petition for a speed bump on Second Avenue. There are small children on Second Avenue and also on adjacent streets, so Coquerrill and Allegheny Avenues. And those streets both do have speed bumps, but we don't have one on Second Avenue. And there are kids kind of walking back and forth among the houses. We are often with our children, but, you know, some of the older kids, you know, fourth graders, fifth graders, do kind of wander around a little bit independently. And there are cars that zip through Second Avenue pretty quickly, sometimes ignoring the stop signs on the streets. And a few months ago, my husband sort of gently used his hand to kind of signal someone to sort of slow down. And one of the drivers... someone to sort of slow down. And one of the drivers stopped his car, got out. There was a little bit of an altercation. It was quite uncomfortable. And it just seems like in a neighborhood, cars shouldn't be driving that quickly. And I think a speed bump would be a physical reminder to keep your speed to an appropriate neighborhood limit. I will also add that there are a number of homes on Second Avenue and adjacent streets, especially Cochrane, that don't have driveways. So as a result, Second Avenue has quite a lot of street parking. And so when you cross the street between cars, visibility is really limited. And it could be very easy for someone driving quickly, or even someone driving a very reasonable speed, not to see a child starting to cross the street between two parked cars. Because their line of sight is so much lower, they can't see kind of past the cars that are parked in the street. And so the, the sentiment on our street was that we would hope a speed bump would help to reduce the speed of vehicles driving on Second Avenue, remind drivers to keep their speed to a neighborhood speed limit, and, and especially keep the children safer who are kind of, you know, crossing in, in the streets in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Do we have any other comments? Perfect. Thank you all so much. Now we can move on to public comments on voting items. Just as a reminder for people tonight, our voting session includes a second, single reading ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the city attorney's contract, as well as a consent agenda for appointments to the Arts and Humanities Committee, Board of Elections, Emergency Preparativeness Committee, Ethics Commission, Grants Review Committee, as well as the Sustainable Maryland Committee. Do we have any public comments on either of those items? Do we have any virtual comments on either of those items?
We do. We have Paul Hubner and Judy Rosenthal.
Great. Mr. Hubner, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good evening. Paul Hubner, Ward Three. Many of us are looking forward to the upcoming discussions on the budget. I am hopeful that this new council will seize this year's opportunity to restructure our city government and chart a new course of financial sustainability. And by financial sustainability, I mean both recognizing the limitations of city income and reducing city expenses relative to revenue. Tonight, I want to talk about the primary source of city revenue, also known as property taxes of Tacoma Park co-owners. Every council over the last 10 years has set fiscal sustainability as a top priority. Yet for nine of those 10 years, the council chose to set the property tax rate above the constant yield rate. The tax rate, together with dramatic increases in home values, have led to an even more dramatic increase in our property taxes over the same 10 years. Today, how many of you could afford to buy your home in Tacoma Park? How many of you have neighbors and acquaintances who have been forced out of their homes by the 75% additional burden of city property taxes? I encourage this council to review and seek to understand the budget facts of Finance Director Chung's presentation. I know I've already encouraged everyone in my public comments and a series of emails to all council members, but I think it is impossible to understate the seriousness of addressing our deficit budgets. On the other hand, I was encouraged by the positive response to Arthur David Olson's public comments last week. I'm hoping this council will correct the last 10 years of ever-increasing unaffordable taxes. I have heard more than one current council member espouse support for following the constant yield rate. I'm hoping that this council will heed the words of Mr. Olson, who quote, "hopes the council will provide the managers with guidance on the rate it hopes to see and suggestions for how to achieve that rate." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hubner. Okay. Do we have any more virtual commenters on voting items?
Non-voting items.
Okay. All right, so we can move on to. No, it's okay. We can open the floor to the general audience for non-voting items if there are individuals that are here while we work on the technical difficulties with bringing up our other virtual commenter. So if you have any comments on any of the non-voting items, you're welcome to come up.
Which microphone do I speak into?
That one. Awesome. We can hear you.
All right. Good evening. I'm Karen Elrich from Ward Five. What? Hello? Can I start over again?
Let's make sure we restart the clock.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Karen Elrich from Ward Five. I want to thank all of you for the huge amount of work that you're doing, putting on into serving our community. And as we begin the planning to hire a new city manager, it is important to take note of where we've been and understand how we got here before moving forward. From the point of view of residents, the situation is confusing and troubling. We welcomed a city manager who wrote that he was looking forward to raising his family here. The job was obviously tremendously difficult with COVID raging, staff discouraged and stressed by the pandemic, and almost complete turnover of council and a deficit. But residents were looking forward to the changes the city manager was working on rolling out, including an online budget process, an interactive budgeting tool, and a 10-year study of the financial health of our city. We await news on whether these projects are still going to happen because they are needed to improve the transparency of the budget for the sake of the new council and residents. Then very suddenly, and without any real explanation, the city manager was gone. And I'm asking you tonight to explain why. We understand that you cannot legally, we understand that you cannot legally discuss some personnel matters. However, the number of secret meetings over the past six months does not engender trust and confidence and transparency from you all. We are really hoping that this new council can put an end to the pattern of closed meetings. We, I also must say that the statement asserting that the city manager had only been hired for, quote, "specific and critical time of transition," unquote, is deeply troubling. Those of us who followed the process know that there was never any implication that the manager's tenure would be limited or temporary until he was gone. So I urge you tonight to have an open, public discussion of any differences you had with the city manager over the budget, over staffing, or over policy differences in general. These are not personnel issues. This is essential city policy. Only then can we go forward in hiring a new city manager with clarity about where we stand and where we want to go as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elrich. Do we have any other comments, public comments?
Good evening. I'm Sue Miller, Ward Three. I think this is my first comment since the election. So first, I want to thank the new council. You have a challenging situation with no city manager, just as the budget cycle begins. And I'm grateful for your willingness to serve the community and to navigate such challenges. Many of you campaigned on promises of increased transparency, accountability, and community engagement. And as you plan a process for hiring a new city manager, you have an opportunity to take action and move us in that direction. The city manager who just left was hired in an entirely closed process. The names of candidates were not released, and the public had no opportunity to ask any candidate any question. It doesn't have to be this way. In the past, Tacoma Park used resident committees in the hiring process. But I want to urge you to engage with the entire city in this new search. You may be under the misimpression that the names of finalists cannot or should not be made public, and yet other cities do it. Not long ago in Gaithersburg, city manager finalists were invited to a public Zoom session where residents asked questions. In this last year alone, city manager finalists have been made public in Cambridge, Massachusetts, in Janesville, Wisconsin, in Bristol, Tennessee, and many other cities. Such public involvement would appear to be the norm. Just two weeks ago, Laredo, Texas hired a new city manager in a process that involved public interviews with the three finalists. The mayor was quoted as saying that he liked having the public involved in the decision-making, that it was beneficial to the council to get feedback from the public, and that, quote, "we have to continue doing open government," unquote. Right now, with the new council, we have the opportunity to press the restart button. You can create a more transparent and participatory city manager search process in order to engage the community and create a shared sense of accountability for this key decision. I believe that all of us and that our city would benefit. Thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-voting items?
I'm Tom Gagliardo. If I've been to one council meeting, I've been to 100. I've addressed probably every issue imaginable. I'm not going to say anything tonight except this. I second what Paul Hubner, Karen Elrich, and Sue Miller just told you. They have told you the essential, critical issue that confronts you, not just as our elected officials, but as our neighbors. You're our neighbors. I'm your neighbor. You should care about us. Don't dismiss us. It's very nice that when you get the council comments, you say thank you to various people who have spoken. That's a good start. But you know what you don't do that we really want you to do? Talk to us. Ask us questions. Tell us what you think. Tell us where you agree. Tell us where you disagree. Work with us to find the best way to meet the needs of the community in an efficient manner. It's not being done. It was not done in the past. But as the previous speaker said, the most important thing is to look to the future and how we can do it right. I have lots to say about what people think the law requires and prohibits. I have a different view. It'll be in writing. I'll send an email to all of you. It won't constitute a meeting, a meeting under the Open Meetings Act. You can respond to me, and we'll see where it goes from there. But your neighbors, my neighbors, have given you a great gift tonight by crystallizing the essential issues that confront you. I see a light on. I'd be glad to talk to you, Mr. Small.
Oh, I can't even wait.
You can talk to me.
No, I can't. It's, it's procedural.
Well, see, the procedure is wrong. So is the democracy by egg timer, too. That's a quote from Sam Abbott, the former mayor. You're more concerned about whether somebody speaks within a three-minute limit than whether substance, substantive information is exchanged with you, whether good ideas are exchanged with you. Open up. We're, we're not your enemy. We're your, we're your neighbors. We're your allies. Anybody want to talk to me? Thank you.
Do we have any other public, public comments on non-voting items?
Hello, thank you everybody for coming. I'm Mary Jane Machuie, Ward Two. I'd already said a lot about my opinion about gentrification and how it's overtaking Tacoma Park specifically, even my neighborhood, and it really affects me. My son was born here 30, almost 38 years ago. He is as diverse as a person can get. I'm his mother. His father is a black African from Kenya who was shot in the head and, and recovering has brain damage because of that. We had to live with that. He is living in hell right now. He has no job with a regular work schedule. He's going crazy. He's driving me crazy because he's living with me because there's no one helping him. No one. He was born here. Talking about neighbors. You're talking about neighbors. He was your neighbor. He was born here. And, and yet you act like he doesn't exist. And I just want to warn you, and maybe you don't know it, but for, the CDC estimates that one out of 44 people born in the United States now has autism. One out of 44. So you might think of that. And when you hire somebody to be on the government or in the whatever, hire somebody who has a little bit of experience and empathy towards people whose brains don't think exactly the same way yours does. Please, we are not your enemies, like these people said. We are not your enemies. We are neighbors. But sometimes we have a little hard time dealing with it. I mean, I would, I have a right brain learning disability and bipolar and, and hardly any depth, visual depth perception. But I'm, I'm a human being, and I'm just as good as you all. And I'm sorry for taking all this time. But you don't, you haven't done anything. I start, I've been complaining since 2015. And I should have started complaining way before then, way before then. And I'm mad at myself because I didn't try to stand up a long time ago. But please do something. You're listening, but you didn't do something. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Machuie. Are there any other public comments on non-voting items? Do we have, yes. Awesome. There she is.
Hi. Is it my turn? I didn't hear.
Yes, it is your turn.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Judy Rosenthal from Ward Two. And I'm representing the Food Forest Group of the Climate Action Coffee Group in Tacoma Park. And we're working in conjunction with the principal at Tacoma Park Elementary to establish a food forest alongside, one side of their playground. A food forest, if you, anyone doesn't know, is a diverse planting of edible foods that mimic a natural forest ecosystem with tall canopy trees and then lower understory trees and lower bushes like berry bushes, all the way down to lower growing, all producing food that become resources for the neighboring communities. So this Saturday, which is why I'm here to tell you, is, this Saturday is our very first activity. On Saturday, on the 25th, from nine to one, we will have our first workday at the elementary school to prepare the soil for planting by doing what's called lasagna gardening. We'll be laying cardboard and compost and mulch, which will slowly break down and build and replenish the soil so that we can plant in the spring. And the kids will have a chance to plant a garden that they can hopefully harvest before the end of school. So we would invite anyone interested in joining us. We'll be behind the school, along that parking lot area up by, off of Philadelphia Avenue from nine to one on Saturday. And hopefully we will see some of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, doesn't look like we have any other comments. So now we're going to move on to council comments. Okay, councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I am delighted to begin these comments. And if they go over time, they probably might. I am, I'm going to assume some things about the way that this goes and that, that people don't pay attention to what's going on in other wards, and that's fine. But I, I would like to mention that my name is Jason Small. I am a attorney who went to Yale Law School. I then was, prior to that, as a state finalist for a Rhodes Scholarship. I've worked up and down the entire spectrum of the government in this place that gets called any number of things, like a swamp. And I'm also really familiar with performative liberalism. That being said, I would say that I also was a city manager in Maryland for four years. I ran meetings such as this. I ran them in a smaller, necessarily staffed town with less money and the same geographic size. I was required to drive around once a week by. I was required to drive around once a week by the council to ensure that I had been to every single place in that place. I resist the notion that anyone in here has any more credence than people who work hard enough to get elected to positions in this town or any other. And I think that they're obligated, in that situation, to try to comport themselves in a manner that is the most efficacious for the town. It is facetious to assume that, over the period of time that I have been on this council, that anyone would have done anything other than that. If you paid attention to these meetings, there have been very specific policy disagreements that I've articulated. You just saw a five-minute colloquy of real high expertise on any number of things associated with economic development, public safety, or any number of other things. As a matter of fact, I've received emails from people who weren't even in my ward, and I have addressed them. I took a chance on something that's technically illegal on the benefit of someone who is even in this room, to be considerate enough to try to explain to him what the position of the council was, and I got flak for it from that person. I would assume that people in here would know that there are other people who live in this town, and they elect people, and they try, and they spend entire lives and careers here. They have any numbers of expertise, and it has a lot more to do with who they are and where they try to be educated and where they try to commit themselves, like Ben Bellows, who walked around the playground here and picked up the garbage from the kids who hustle here and try to learn basketball, maybe like Steve Francis, who didn't get mentioned, and your eloquent, eloquent send-off of Lee Jordan. So please don't take a day where a person with a chronic illness such as fibular out where, let's say, nine different air pressure situations happen, and tell that person that any of the contributions they've made to their life or their city, the 11 consecutive sessions at Lee Jordan Field with five black kids, don't matter. Thank you. Now, I'm going to take a walk because I'm in pain, see? And I've been trying to hold that in and not be rude to the staff tonight as we go through things that other people haven't done, because I'm not trying to have too much pace for the brand-new council, and you shouldn't either. Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
Thank you. First of all, I just respond very positively to Judy Rosenthal's call to the food forest. I plan to be there myself. It's going to be cold, but I want to be there and help the community with the food forest. I think that's getting our hands in the dirt, and getting kids started early to understand and value our ecosystem is incredibly important. And we can do it as a community and build community at the same time. I'd like to sort of generalize, in a sense, and thank my neighbors, Paul, and Karen, and Sue, and Tom, and Mary Jane, and thank you all for being here. I do think that this particular way that we interact is stilted and not very conducive to a discussion. I'm doing the best I can. We're doing the best we can. I don't know if we can change it. It does not encourage dialogue. It's one way, and I wish we could do that. So I will ask and see if there's ways that we can encourage real dialogue, because these are real issues, the resignation of the city manager, the budget. These are real issues, important issues, and while we have constraints in what we can say, we can certainly talk with one another better than as we are now. We are, all of us, folks that are trying as best they can, and sometimes I think the procedures and administrative norms are getting in the way. So history, we do need to know our history so that we don't repeat it. And I guess that's all I'll have to say. And again, thank you, neighbors, for being here. I'm listening. I'm learning, and I'll see if we can find better ways to talk.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to everybody who came here tonight. The first thing I'd like to mention is that many of you have been to the Piney Branch Pool recently and found the water to be cooler than you wanted. They have come and worked on, the county has come out and worked on the boiler that heats the water, and they have now, as of this evening, found that it is too old and beyond repair. And so the pool is going to have to be closed for a while until they can find and install a new boiler. My wife will be trying to keep the community up to date on the status of those repairs and when the pool will reopen again. Right now, the water, some people may find, if they're doing aggressive exercise such as lap swimming, they may find that the water is tenable. But the pool, if not closed tomorrow, is probably going to be closing very soon. And certainly, small children are not going to want to be in the pool, or seniors, or they're just recreational reasons. We'll find it far too cold to be swimming. And beyond that, and more to the point of the discussions that have started here tonight, I would just encourage anyone who wants to talk about things to contact me. My phone number is on the city website, and that may not be the final solution, but that's certainly a step forward in communicating with the council. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor Searcy. I just want to say a really deep thank you to everybody who's called in on Zoom and who also has come out tonight. I know it takes time. These meetings are long, and we are your neighbors. That's why we did this. You've got all this new people up here. You can assume we're pretty much just like everybody else that's out there, wanting to do our best, trying to figure out how everything works. Can tell you, most of us, I think, have been working, you know, 10, even 12-hour days, six days a week, trying to figure out how to make everything come together for our neighbors. And it's not easy, and I know it's really, really hard to see how many closed meetings there have been, and know that we came into this office knowing that that was a sentiment out there. We were there, and now we're here. So although we're sitting up high, it does, it sort of gives this false, stilted feeling. I think we've all, all the new council members in particular, have said we feel funny sitting up here. It feels like a stilted conversation. I think that all of us have been doing our best to open our doors. I know almost everybody's got either office hours or they've been holding two to three meetings a day with individual residents or groups of three of us or two of us with residents, and we're all open to that. So please, please email us, call us. I've got a meeting with a resident I'm looking at right out here to have coffee in a couple of days, and we're really open to those kinds of dialogues. So please consider the door open. We do read your emails. We may not always respond, but everybody up here is really paying a lot of attention. So we're incredibly grateful to see you as we walk around the community, to have you come to us and talk to us. And I really, I just really want to say thank you, Sue, and Karen, too, for very discreet, particular recommendations. We could do that more one-on-one and hash it out for more than three minutes. But I really value those as a new council member, sort of that this is something you could do, let's talk about it, because that then goes into our idea bank, and you become a thought partner for us, and that's what we need. We also only have so many hours in a day. Ideally, people, and I know our mayor has a full-time job during the day, too, so you can imagine there are only so many hours to do the homework that is required to come up with all these new ideas and read lots of reports on different issues. So we appreciate everything that people are doing, especially analysis that gets done. Thank you.
Councilmember DeBaal?
Yes, thank you. Following up on that, I do have a specific question for the city management. In the next week or two, if it's possible, to get the answer to a question that was raised by Ms. Elrich, the status of some of these projects, the 10-year fiscal health plan, the online budget, the budget exercise. I think I may know the answer to these, but I think it would be really appropriate to let the public know where several of these projects are. And I think it might take, you know, a few minutes to get that together, but I would appreciate it.
I'm happy to do that and send an email to the council.
All right. Well, first, I want to thank everyone that has come out and provided comments on the speed hump as well as non-voting items. I know that these are some difficult times, as my colleagues have expressed, you know, as a new council, as a new mayor, trying to navigate the resignation of a city manager. We are limited for a plethora of reasons in terms of what we can say around the decision-making that, I don't want to speculate in terms of what the city manager may have decided in terms of the resignation. What I choose to do is for us to identify ways to move forward, identifying a path that's going to be necessary and critical for our staff as they are managing the transition to new leadership and the uncertainty. So we're spending time focusing on the people that work here, making sure they want to continue to work here. We are spending the time to start thinking about some of the questions that were raised. What are our priorities as a city? What are the things that we really value as, in a city manager? What are some of the things that we need to make sure that we know of so that we know it when we see it, when we're actually looking in resumes and things? All of that is critically important, that as we are moving forward with the selection process, that we're able to recruit and retain a city manager in our city. I agree. I know it was said earlier, these were some hard times. And if you look around, you'll see a lot of movement that's happening in various cities in terms of their leadership. And it's due in large part, you know, things were just really hard for everyone over the last few years. They don't call it a great resignation for nothing, right? There's a lot of just change that's happening. So I think that what we will have to do as a city, what we will have to do as a council, is to keep in mind what we are looking for, what we need, and how do we create the right environment to recruit the talent that we so desperately need in the city. So with that, I look forward to working with the entire community as we are coming up with ideas and paths forward in terms of the city manager selection. I love the idea of the Zoom call stuff, so now I'm going to Google Laredo and figure out what they did, because I think that was a really, that's a really cool idea. I'm committed to equity, so making sure that we're not just providing opportunities for people in the community that have the time and the energy and the patience to come at 8:30 at night and sit in a city council meeting, but we're creating those opportunities for other people to hear the voices of other people in our community and what they want to see in city management. I think that's really critical for us right now. So again, I value all of the feedback that's been provided. I just want to, again, request everyone's patience and also encourage all of us to start looking forward, instead of trying to come up with speculation around what might have happened. Let's focus on where we want to be as a community. So with that, as was mentioned, I will be testifying on Friday in Annapolis on Just Cause. I will also, on Sunday, be meeting with Girl Scouts to just talk about what it's like to be a mayor. So that's going to be awesome. And also on Sunday, we'll be attending the Lee Jordan Film Event. So it will be a very busy weekend, but an exciting one. And I also hope on Saturday, depending on how cold it is, Councilmember Gibson, I might be out there, but I am not a gardener, but I could try to make my way out on Saturday morning to help prep for some planting. So I'm looking forward to that. Okay, so with that, I will turn things over to Acting Deputy City Manager Rosalind Grisby for any city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor Searcy. I want to share apologies with Acting City Manager Greg Clark, who's unable to join us tonight, but is here in spirit, I'm sure. Other than that, I do not have additional comments tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, well, next on the agenda is the 2022, I just want to take this podium up, is the 2022 Election Report and Debrief. So with that, I just want to defer back to Acting Deputy City Manager. Do we have members of our Board of Elections that would like to join?
Yes, thank you. We are joined by John Quinn and Matt Lynn tonight to present the report from the Board
Did I press a button? I'm on now. Thank you. My name is Matt Ling. This is John Quinn. We're both members of the Board of Elections. I think you all have the report, so without kind of repeating what's in it, I'll just give a brief introduction. I've been on the board since 2019 when I moved here to Tacoma Park. And I'm an attorney, and I've worked in campaigns in before. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have about the report. The board was quite happy with how this year went. This is our second time doing a mail-in report, all mail-in election. We really were able to learn a lot from the first time around in 2020, and we're taking in the lessons that we learned this time moving forward. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Wonderful. The lights are coming up now. Councilmember Hansak?
Hi, it's great to see you again, and I just want to say a gigantic thank you for such a wonderful process that was followed and for an excellent report. I found it really easy to read and very digestible, so thank you. I made a list of three or four questions. Hopefully, there's some overlap with the lights I see on. I guess my first question is, you know, I'm from Ward Five, and I am incredibly pleased to see the increased voter turnouts that have happened over the last two elections, in particular, which the report notes is likely largely driven by the mail-in process that we adopted, which is, you know, bigger than just mail-in itself, but all the different pieces that go into that, good communication, as well as, you know, having this on even year election years. I would be really interested in hearing some, any thoughts you have and others in the committee on what more can we do? I mean, this is, the increase in percentage is incredible, so maybe somebody wouldn't even ask that. I would be curious to know what other cities, other progressive cities in America of our size, and maybe some, what have our demographics look like in terms of voter turnout on a good year? Anyway, so, yeah, ideas. What else could council help make happen and city staff?
The turnout for Tacoma Park was pretty high relative to other municipalities of the same size, as I understand it, at around 50%. It was also due to being synchronized with the federal election, the even-year elections. Turnout is hard, so is voter registration. It's really just hard to register. It takes a lot, a lot of work. It takes follow-up. More voter, just more presence at local events to make sure people can sign up to register to vote. I know people can just do that year-round, up until the day of election, even on the day of election, to register to vote. The city already makes it pretty easy. The board is certainly looking at ways to improve voter turnout in multi-home buildings and trying to think about just different approaches we could be taking, and that's something certainly on our agenda going forward for the next year. But we'd love to hear any ideas the Kett City Council might have as well. But like I said, it's a challenge.
I won't pretend like I have ideas. I'm looking for the same ideas within our ward. We have one of the, you know, lowest turnouts in our ward, and that's hard to see. I'd love to figure that out and love to do some brainstorming with you and others from our ward, maybe, about what we could do. And then I guess my other questions are related to budget. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit, if you know, about how our budget might compare to other elections of the past and to other municipalities of our size. I think it was about 64K this time around. Yeah, if you could just speak to that a little bit, and I'm sorry, but I don't have the numbers in front of me, nor do I know how this compares, say, this year to a year when we didn't. to a year when we didn't do the mail-in voting, so if you could speak to that a little, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Well, I can say these are basically in line with what costs were in 2020, although Jesse might have a better clue as to years prior to that, because I joined around then, so I'm not sure if you have any.
Sure. Well, I could say it is much more expensive to do a vote-by-mail election. There are costs that you just don't have with the regular election. However, our elections have been pretty low-tech, so we use hand counts or we've used, we've not used the major vendors that cost a lot, and that has kept our costs low even before the mail-in voting. But we're, I think we're fairly comparable to other cities our size.
In terms of mail-in ballot pricing, because you said it was a lot more, I'm assuming you're talking about maybe five or tens of thousands more.
Sure. Absolutely, yeah, the postage and the printing, it's very, yeah, it's quite expensive, yeah.
But I do want to say, I feel like it's worth it, given just the huge percentage and increase of voter, but I do think it's also something worth, you know, wrapping our heads around and maybe doing some cost comparisons with other cities and see what else we can do, because it would be great if we can keep doing it and keep it, you know, keep the costs manageable. So, thank you. I think that's all I've got.
Councilmember Gibson?
On that issue, or cost, I guess I highlight the end of the report, the labor costs provided below substantially understate the actual amount of time from city staff and others. So, I mean, for us to really know what it costs, we need to know how many hours city staff put into this. I mean, it, yeah, I mean, can't go back on it, but going in the future, I mean, that's, that's a part of the picture. It's something that I've talked about in terms of all of our programs, time on task, how many, you know, how many hours, how many days, whatever. Anyhow, it's something that has to be considered in the budget picture, in the cost, cost picture. I was wondering, a couple of things that, well, first of all, the degree of handholding and callbacks to folks that didn't do right, I was one of those that didn't do it right. And so I came in, I signed my, my wife's ballot. Anyhow, but I came in and I, and soon thereafter, I got an email saying that I should come in, so you guys are, were on top of it. So that impressive, impressive kind of hands-on work for, for many of us. A couple of just observations that, for, from my point of view, just having seen out front as I was trying to get folks to, to vote for me, was that the synchronized voting was confusing. We had folks that came to out front here, but then know they needed to go to the county place. So I would have thought that, well, I shouldn't say that, I would have thought, I would ask that you guys put together your recommendations. How would you improve it next time, having to do a synchronizing, maybe making that clearer? I also thought there was a little bit of confusion around what was called a mail-in ballot process, or whatever the word was. It really is a mail-in plus, you know? And that was confusing, because you, we did come in, many of us did come in and vote in person as well as in drop boxes. So I think that's a, just a minor thing that could, could be cleared up in the future to let people know that all three methods of voting was allowed. Great job, impressive report, but I think you, you guys know how we could improve it in the future, and you know, you might want to dig in a little deeper and see what you can come up with. I thank you again for a great job done, impressive.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeMaul?
Yes, thank you. So one of the things that Councilmember Gibson pointed out was that last couple sentences, and they also talk about volunteer hours, like you have nothing else to do. Is it possible to track volunteer hours? It might not even be possible.
We did, yeah.
You did? Okay, so there is some.
We did our best to track the hours.
Yeah, so there's some estimate then of, of how many volunteer hours that there were between city staff and others, which I'm sure is a very large number. Yeah.
It wasn't as bad as 2020.
Well, that's reassuring. What was the efficiency that you discovered that allowed you to, that you instituted that allowed you to do things a little more smoothly?
In 2020, it was just a whole new system that we were working with, new poll books, trying to figure out how to use the poll books to do ballots, envelope scanning, which they're not exactly meant to do. But, you know, in 2022, we sort of figured, figured out all those procedures from 2020, and so we sort of knew how to use software, the web portal, the Know Inc., the epulse. We just had a much better idea.
Great.
And also, we didn't have the, all the, we had the six-feet separated tables in 2020.
Right, yeah, you didn't have as much, yeah, that's a good point.
Took much more time.
Okay. So, second question, was the postal service an issue, either mailing out or coming back in, while we're on the topic of mail-in?
I think.
And mail-out, for that matter?
We had a lot less issues this time around in 2022.
Really? Okay, great.
Yeah.
Good, good to know, good to know.
We only, maybe a handful, really not that many complaints about people not getting their ballots. Last time, there was a batch that there was an issue. It was with the vendor, with the, I'm not sure, the post office, but we didn't really have any.
Yeah, I remember this now.
Yeah, we didn't have any major issues in 2022. The only thing that did come up that we'll want to address later on, the board's looking at it, we'll, we'll be looking at it next year, is just how the, the letters are postmarked, or the ballots are postmarked when they're being sent back. There's, there's e-postmarks, there's physical postmarks, sometimes they don't line up, and we have specific rules that we have to follow about when we can accept a ballot, and that caused some confusion. We spent probably, you know, four, five hours, six hours trying to track down where these ballots had come from, or when they came in, when the person tried to send it, you know, sometimes they don't stamp the ballots when they come in, when they get to the post office, you know, just depending if they go through a Dropbox, whether they're picked up from a postal worker, so that's something we probably need to look at. And that probably was maybe about two dozen ballots, maybe a dozen or two dozen ballots that had these issues.
So are you following the bill about coordinating between the county and the city?
Yeah, I've testified twice.
You testified on that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just for everybody who may not know what your, what the position is, tell us a little bit about that.
Sure. The, the bill really requires.
It's a state bill?
The state bill, that's right. Just requires that the state Board of Elections have a requirement in their next contracting with their next contractor to require them to have the capability to do ranked choice ballots. Currently, I guess the previous contractor didn't. And there's concern that if they try to ask it, like, after they hired a contractor, that it's just going to cost a lot of money. So it's really not that, it's kind of a no-brainer, I think. It shouldn't be too hard to have, it's just basically additional software, additional code. You won't have to really have different machines. So it's going to require this, the state Board of Elections to have these capabilities so that Tacoma Park, if the council and the board, you know, we want to join ballots with them to murder elections with theirs.
Yeah.
That process will be a lot more smoother.
And possibly cost savings, that's why I asked.
Yeah, yeah.
I meant to ask about the status of that bill. Let's remember to do that next week. So one more small question, and then just a bigger picture. So on ballots that were received by Dropbox versus mail, I'm assuming that we have the breakout of that? And at some point, I'd appreciate seeing those numbers, because I'm having a feeling that Dropbox was bigger than mail, but I'd sure like to know whether that was true.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, so that's really interesting, that Dropbox is so popular. I'd like to see that. And did you all, my big question, did you all have any other recommendations for improvements or change, or stay in the course that you'd like to make sure we hear?
Yeah, we're currently working on that.
Oh, okay, so there's part two still coming?
Yeah, so we're kind of trying to prioritize what, the things that are more immediate versus we can put off.
Yeah.
But we'll certainly have many suggestions for code amendments or other, other things.
Well, good, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you all for the work that you've done, because without people like you, you know, this would, all of this would not be possible.
Thank you.
That's it, thanks.
Councilmember Fulcher?
So I was just like doing the math, that it's like 64,500 divided by 5,800, and so I was kind of wondering. Per person, so that's like $11 per vote? So like, what does that number look like? Because, I mean, it's great that we did the mail-in voting, and that made the numbers of people voting go up a lot, and so comparing the, the cost per voter would be interesting to see. I would, of course, still think it's worth it, like, even if, even if that didn't show, you know, the improvement that I would hope that it would show. I think it's, you know, really great that we empower so many people to have their voice heard in Tacoma Park, especially the three groups that aren't necessarily included in other elections. I was wondering, are we keeping track of how ballots are getting here by person, or is that too nosy, too, like, too personal information? Like, do we know if, how many ballots from Ward One were dropped off here at the community center versus in the recreation center?
We, we don't have that.
Okay.
I mean, we, we could have tracked it, I suppose, but that would be quite a bit of work, probably.
And I'm just wondering if it would be helpful to have more ballot drop-off boxes, you know, like, especially like in Ward Five, for instance, where we would like to see more of our community members to feel like, oh, just drop it right off, you know, maybe there's a post office there or somewhere that would host a box next time, because I would love to see, you know, more voting in Ward Five. And I was just wondering, were the hours what you guys were predicting as far as how late you were working to count votes? Is it, was it pretty normal?
This time around, we were able to pretty much stay in business hours. We had a staff of maybe two to four on any given day, so.
And did it, did the amount of work feel overwhelming, or did it feel okay?
It felt okay. We had, by the time Election Day came up, we had scanned about 2,500, 600, I think it's in the report, ballots. So we were caught up with everything that the city had received up to that point. And we did get a lot of people vote on Election Day, which we weren't anticipating, about the 800 or so, plus we received maybe another 2,000, 1,000, 2,000 through USPS and through the drop boxes. And I think there was, at that point, a bit of a rush. I basically had to call my entire immediate family in town to get them all here, and that, so that ended up being a little bit more work, because of course, everyone is really eager to hear what the results were, and at that point, we had to count 3,000 more ballots. And so I think at that point, there was a bit of a rush to, to try to finish everything, especially because there's a specific deadline in the code that we need to do it by, and of course, we, the more time we get through it all, the more time we are able to then try to look and fix and help cure any ballot issues. So I think, maybe going forward, next time, we might just want to plan for more staff for the day, day or two after the election, to try to really get ahead of counting everything.
Yeah, I really appreciate the work that you guys did, and just don't want to lose you from burnout, from being like, oh my gosh, I never want to do that again, so.
It's only, it's only every two years, so it's not that bad.
So you'll forget by then.
Yeah, exactly.
That's, that's how far apart my children are as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to you and all the board members for the work that you put in. I know this is a laborious task every, every time that we have an election, and really appreciate your dedication to getting this accomplished. I just had one question. I've had several people ask me about the write-in votes, and I see that the appendix is blank in this report.
Yep.
And it says, though, that it's planned for the future. Could you give me a time when that, when to expect that, so I can pass that on?
Really, whenever our schedule's allowed to get through it all, which is basically a matter of typing in, typing up about 100, 200 names. That's something we might want to explore later, maybe making a threshold of when to report write-in names. Maybe you have to receive more than two or three, because I think a lot of the time, the write-in votes are really kind of a protest vote, they're not, you know, actually voting for a candidate, so it doesn't.
I don't think people are looking for Mickey Mouse and Donald Duck, but if there's.
We have some of those in there, I'm sure.
If there's real people, I think it's, I think it's good to report them.
Okay.
Even if it's only one vote.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we should be, try to get that done soon, next few weeks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, one kind of follow-up question. You mentioned maybe a few more folks the day of election or day after election. I, I can't confirm it, but the, I guess I was, had understood that some efforts, orientation efforts of the new council was, those efforts were delayed because the ranked choice counting may have delayed that. I don't know if that's the case or not, but presumably, if you do have extra people at the day of election or afterwards, then that can move quickly, too.
It wasn't the ranked choice, it was just that having 3,000 ballots in envelopes inside another envelope, each one has to be opened, scanned, checked, has to go through the whole process. It was, ranked choice happens immediately. Once it's scanned, ranked choice, in fact, doesn't add any time at all, frankly, it's the same thing as scanning another ballot, the software just does it automatically, press a button, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I, just to piggyback off of Councilmember Gibson's point, I think we had a large number of candidates. There was like three races across the board, and also the, just frankly, the calendar was not on our side, just because of how the weeks fell. So by the time we had things counted, then it was time basically for Thanksgiving, and then, so it just was, was not ideal setup in terms of how the calendar working in juxtaposition with the, the voting that needed to happen. City Clerk?
So I would just say, over the next year or so, you might want to think, we could think about the calendar. That can be changed. It's in the charter, it's a charter amendment, but it's something to think about, because we have a very compressed timeframe, and there are good things about it, and there are challenges with it. So it's something to put a pin in. May I add something else? While I have the floor, Arthur David Olson, although he is not on the Board of Elections anymore, he, he played the same role he did two years ago by assisting with the process, and really, he's a tremendous help, and he needs to be recognized for it.
She understates it when she says assisting.
Well, thank you, Arthur, and Matt, and everyone that worked in Board of Elections to make this happen. Councilmember Gibson, did you have another point?
No.
Councilmember Hansak?
I did have just a quick question. It might sound silly here in Tacoma Park, but I, I am just curious if at any point anybody on the Board of Elections, including you, ever felt unsafe, and whether you felt adequately protected by the city, just in light of what's happening across the country. Just, just want to make sure we've checked in on that.
I didn't this cycle, no. I remember in 2020, for my first time doing it, you know, it crossed my mind about, I mean, besides the pandemic, there's other safety concerns, but this time, I really didn't have any concerns myself. But that's, speaking for myself, I can't speak for the rest of the board on that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we checked in on that in light of what's happening in other places all across the country. Thank you.
I'll bring that up with the board and ask their thoughts as well. Thank you.
Well, I just want to echo again my appreciation for all of the hard work that you all did. This was, you know, what I could honestly say probably was one of the most active election cycles, at least I've seen since being in Tacoma Park. I mean, just to see so many people that have been, that were engaged. You know, I do want to echo the comments from some of my colleagues that highlighted that there was some confusion around the county ballots versus the city ballots. I know that I had some volunteers at the rec center, and you had some people who wanted to put county ballots in the city of Tacoma Park box, and so there was just a little bit of. bit of confusion there. And another, and I, I've mentioned this before, but what can we do to proactively really focus on our multifamily buildings in terms of getting them registered, getting them to the point where they're getting those ballots? Because one of the things that is hard for candidates, it's always hard to get into the buildings to begin with, but, and then, quite frankly, a lot of times, the onus is on the candidates to educate the residents around how to vote in the city. And just as a person who, who's run, I, you know, and I, you know, I'm welcome, I'm happy to do it, but I, it kind of feels like that's not, it's really easy to sway perhaps some people in some of our multifamily buildings where maybe they're immigrants, English is not their first language, and it's, it's just really easy to sway people if you're a candidate to, you know, in a particular way, that kind of just doesn't sit right with me. And so I wonder if there are some ideas that you all have been considering about ways to increase voter registration drive within some of our larger multifamily buildings? What are some ways in which we can connect with those property owners, tenants association meetings, maybe partnering with, with folks over in HCD to see about ways that we can, on a more continuous basis, provide that voter education to residents in our multifamily buildings? I think that is something that I, I think would be really, really helpful, because we do have so many very large buildings that would vote if they understood how to vote, or if they understood their eligibility to vote, especially for our undocumented residents. So I do think that that might be something helpful, and would welcome any ideas the Board of Elections, they have on ways in which we may be able to, to engage in some of those activities. And I don't know if that's something you all have thought about.
Certainly, we talk about it quite often, and we're thinking, you know, more, and all of those ideas were really, all of those ideas were really great. I think at the end of the day, it really comes down, it just takes time, it takes staff, we're board of volunteer residents, so it's just hard to often, you know, it takes a lot of planning just to go in to do something like that, and then to actually execute it, it takes a lot of time, it takes, you know, Saturday in a weekend, or, so we're looking at ways, maybe it means engaging with like the youth, youth council, just trying to find other eager volunteers to help us out on that, maybe asking the city, just putting out in the newspaper, calling for volunteers to help with, with that kind of thing, might be a start too.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's right, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, I think the only way you're able to do it is to really go door-to-door, which is time-intensive and labor-intensive, but perhaps the most beneficial approach to actually kind of moving the needle forward. And remind me, I remember there were discussions around wanting the drop box at the rec center before Election Day, and there were, and I could be mixing up my years, I know we had the boxes out there, but I, I thought one year we, we were not, because we weren't doing polling at the rec center for the city, we didn't have the boxes out early. Did we have them out early enough? Okay. Oh, it was, it was, I remember now, it was the fact we wanted to vote at the rec center.
Yes.
It was like, we wanted to do something at the rec center this time that we could not do, and it was because the county was take, had taken over the rec centers, so folks could not vote at the rec center. And I know that that's something that is challenging for us to try to navigate, but if we could have a, or figure out some approach to be able to allow people to vote in person, I, again, I know that logistically, it just may not be feasible, but being over at the rec center, you, you really were asking people, if they didn't have, they weren't registered, and they didn't have ballot, and they wanted to vote in the, they were City of Tacoma Park residents, they got their county voting in the rec center, and if they didn't have that ballot, you had to tell them that you're going to have to go over to the community center. And for some folks that didn't have cars, or were on a bus, that just is not going to happen. So either we are doing the legwork ahead of time to make sure that we're getting those people registered, so they get those mail-in ballots, so that they're able to just drop off their ballot, or, you know, figuring out a way to come up with some, some location for, you know, as, you know, Councilmember Fulcher mentioned, additional places for people to, to register same day and vote same day in other parts of the city. Because I, I will say, my campaign, we, we actually did a shuttle bus just for that purpose, and we had people getting on and off of a van, just taking them from the rec center over to the community center, because they had no other way. And so I think that, that is something that we do need to think about, especially as we're trying to encourage a more inclusive approach to, to voting. If people got to get on two buses to go to another polling place, they're not likely to go.
With regard to the multifamily buildings, I think it also might have, there's a relationship between the rules that allow, encourage candidates to go to the, to, within the multifamily, I found it difficult to get into multifamily buildings. Jesse helped by communicating with the property owner, they had, maybe had a change of staff or something, but I think we can set the stage early on, if we, if there was contact made by the city, I guess, with, with the property owners, yes, candidates are allowed, and, and what the procedure is, as well as the voting specifics.
Yeah. Councilmember Hanzak?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just thinking, you know, this is so great to be able to have this kind of public conversation with you, Matt, right now, and I'm trying to think how we further this conversation to really get these ideas down in your report, maybe some of, all of us ran as candidates, I'm sure some of the candidates who, who didn't win also would have a lot of particular ideas from their particular experience. I wonder what format, and this is kind of a question to the mayor, a question to Jesse, a question to you, what, what is a format that we can utilize to give you some direct feedback besides just sending you a one-off email? I've got all sorts of ideas spinning around in my head right now, just about things that could have gone well to promote voter registration, et cetera. What's, what's the way to do that?
We are working to put out a survey, it might have already, already gone out.
Okay.
That's the first way to do it, just, and that's going to all the candidates this cycle. Other ways, I mean, emailing the, the board, the election, the board's email address, we monitor that, we can discuss further. I mean, you're all welcome to come to our, our meetings, we meet on the second Thursday of every month, the first, the second Thursday of every month. Councilmembers as well as residents, they're open meetings, they're all welcome to come and talk with us. And then we're happy to put that, if there's anything specific that someone might want to talk about, we're happy to put that on our agenda as well, so that we can also prepare for the, you know, whatever you might want to discuss. Those are probably the, the best ways, I think, but.
Yes, and, and I remember you all in the past shared those survey results with the council, and it was actually quite useful, so if you've received that link, please provide your feedback. I, I received it, but check your, it might have come through your campaign emails? I received one.
It hasn't gone out yet, so you.
Oh, it hasn't gone out?
You might have received another survey, but it wasn't.
I do. The college student campaign survey, okay, great, because I know I answered a survey to someone about the, about the election.
Any email you sent, I'll, I'll make sure, whatever is put into an email will be put onto the agenda for the boards, it'll be discussed with everyone too, it just won't go to me or Jesse, it'll go before the whole board too, so.
Okay. Excellent. Wonderful, well, I don't see any more lights, but thank you all so much for coming out tonight, and all of the hard work that you've been doing with the selection season, and advocating in Annapolis as well on our behalf, so thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so I've promised my colleagues that at nine, nine PM, we would take a quick ten-minute break, just so that everyone can, can stretch our legs a little bit, we will reconvene at nine seventeen. Led with during public comments is our success, thanks to Congressman Raskin's office in terms of our postal delivery service issues. So we received a notification from Councilmember Raskin's office stating that, starting February the 16th, which was on Thursday of last week, the Silver Spring Post Office Supervisor, Customer Supervisor or Customer Services, Frank Gilliard, and other postal officials will be personally visiting constituents' homes to discuss their mail delivery service. This is being done to determine what the root causes of the issues may be and to determine any correlation in the inquiries reported. In addition to speaking with constituents who contacted Congressman Raskin's office, postal officials will check with other customers on neighboring streets to assess their mail service. So another point that was noted was, once the investigation concludes, Mr. Gilliard will review all the comments collected and contact Congressman Raskin's office with the results. On the day of the results, postal officials will arrive in government-issued vehicles and will display their postal identification. So I just want to give everyone a heads up that they are trying to figure out what are some of the issues with mail delivery that's happening, particularly in Wards 2 and 3, that you will have postal workers coming around and asking about what folks have been experiencing with their mail delivery. And also, just want to remind folks regarding informed delivery notifications, the notification does not guarantee that the mail shown will arrive that same day, but instead confirms that the shown mail is being processed and will arrive soon. The postal officials will explain the process of informed delivery during their visits with constituents as well. So again, just be mindful that if you've experienced or your neighbors have experienced issues with mail delivery, postal workers will be coming around. They may have already started over the course of this week to really try to get at what are some of the causes and hopefully, working with Congressman Raskin's office, will be able to get a solution. I do want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Gibson and Councilmember Dibala, for continuing to work collaboratively to identify ways in which we can bring attention at the highest levels of the postal service to our mail delivery issues. So thank you both for all of your hard work. So with that, I am going to move us on to our next agenda item, which is a voting session. Our first item is a single reading ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the city attorney's contract. And just confirming with the city clerk, we don't have any comments or edits that were made since the version that was discussed last week.
No, everything's, it's what you have in your packet is posted online, it's...
The same.
It's the same.
Excellent. All right. So would anyone like to move the single reading ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the city attorney's contract?
So moved.
Second.
Second? Okay. Because it's a single reading ordinance, would you like to call the roll?
Yes, please.
Okay. So...
Councilmember Fulter?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Oh, Mayor Sirsi?
Aye.
Sorry. I was looking at you.
Great. Thank you for that. Okay, so our next voting item is a consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on as one motion without discussion unless a council member requests removal of an item for individual discussion and consideration. Would someone like to move the consent agenda for appointments to various committees?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. The consent agenda moves forward. So now we're going to move forward to our work sessions. The first is traffic calming on Second Avenue, the Second Avenue Speed Bump. And we are joined by our Director of Public Works, Darrell Berthwaite.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In regard to the Second Avenue traffic calming request, it's a request for a single speed hump located mid-block on Second Avenue. It's gone through the process as defined by the city code and regulations, and they've had the required petition submitted and community meeting scheduled. And so now we're at the state of we've gone through the public hearing, so this work session discussion is just to identify any questions or concerns related to the request in preparation for first reading of the ordinance as drafted. The only change that's been made in the recommendations on the city staff level, the initial request was for a, what's been identified as a city standard speed hump, the more aggressive speed hump. It's been the department's policy for the past several years to recommend the use of the more preferred county standard speed hump in terms of traffic engineering guidelines. So that's the only change in the initial request to what's in front of you tonight for the review.
I'm sorry, say that again, so it's going to be the county speed style?
It's a department recommendation that we would install the Montgomery County standard speed hump in the location.
And just so that my colleagues are aware, so are we talking about the city's speed hump, which was what bump on a hump?
Yes, and you're jumping ahead.
Oh, sorry.
I'll go in painful detail, no, not too painful. I'll go briefly into detail on that distinction in the next...
In the next presentation, okay.
Yes, but bump on a hump is the city, previous city special speed hump.
Okay.
Is Darrell going to say bump on a hump?
I am, I've got it written.
And will we understand?
Will we understand which one is more aggressive? You used the word aggressive. Okay, that's going to be in your presentation. Okay, good. That'll be helpful.
And just really quickly before we move on to the next presentation, so during the public hearing, it was mentioned about traffic going down Second Ave and speeding. Was there any assessments that were done in terms of traffic counts on that stretch of road? And whether or not, you know, we may need to install a future, future traffic calming mechanisms along that street?
Yeah, the police did not do any traffic counts for speed or volume of traffic for this request. It's not currently a required part of the process, but there's been suggestions that we, in future revisions, consider that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions about the speed hump on Second Ave before we move on to the next item?
Nope.
Excellent. All right. Let's move on to the overview of traffic calming and sidewalk request processes.
Great, and thank you. And I apologize in advance for not having this presentation available for you to review prior to this evening. It's certainly our goal to have it at least a week in advance, but given competing demands, this was as quick as I could get it completed. So apologies and happy to answer any questions, and it will remain as a link to the council agenda, and we can continue to share information. In preparation for this, you've received numerous attachments in the agenda item itself, background information related to resolutions, ordinances, and regulations. And in fact, it was supplemented by additional information documents provided by Councilmember Dibala. So my goal for this evening's presentation is to give you enough information to understand the historic context and the past practice of the city and the current process for both traffic calming and sidewalk request processes. And the hope is that, understanding kind of where we are and how we got there, it'll help inform this council's future discussions about any changes or revisions that you might want to make to the existing process as it exists today. So I'll start with going over the traffic calming request process. It's been in place for decades. I started working here in the late 80s, and there were certainly speed humps in Tacoma Park prior to that. The first regulation that I'm aware of was passed in the mid-'90s, and that set out the current process that we use today in regard to how to request and how to go through the traffic calming process. In 2011, the council adopted some additional guidelines, which primarily related to identifying sighting location recommendations. In a future slide, I'll go through that in detail. The traffic calming request process as it stands now is a resident-driven process. It requires a petition to initiate the request. It requires the signature of two-thirds of the residents in the petition area to sign on in support of the requested traffic calming. And the petition area in this process is defined as the block where the request is being considered, as well as the adjacent block of the same street. And I will note that that definition of the area differs slightly from the sidewalk process, so that's one of the issues that has been raised. It also requires a community meeting coordinated by the petitioners. It can be through the Citizens Association if one exists, and then, once that meeting is held, there's a report back to the city clerk to confirm the date, location, method of advertising, the number of people attending, and the disposition of the attendees. It doesn't limit the request in moving forward, it just is a part of the public outreach and communication process. Once that's been completed, then the city clerk's office schedules a public hearing, similar to what we've had this evening. The notification to the public is provided by the city's clerk's office through a direct mail to the neighborhood surrounding the request, as well as a notice in the newsletter. And then, of course, the public hearing is held, comments are received, and ultimately, it's moved forward through a, two reading ordinance of the city council. Just in living with this process for the times that I have, there is some real benefit to it being a neighborhood-initiated process. I know there's kind of two sides of the hand on that, but what we find is, or historically what we found, is that by having residents initiate the conversation themselves in and amongst themselves, there tends to be sympathetic or an understanding or a working out of the details, like not in front of my house but somewhere else, kind of thing, that should city staff kind of come in, set up a meeting, and start the process may be a little more rigid and formal. So I know, I've heard both sides of that. The fact that it is a resident-initiated process means that there's a big burden on the part of the residents, but there is some benefit to the neighborhood themselves having initiated and going through that process. So I just throw that out there as a side comment. In the early days, certainly, and for quite some time, the city's use of traffic calming was really focused on speed humps. It was exclusively speed humps. And for my purposes, I use the hump and bump interchangeably. They don't mean any difference in the city's process. In the early 2000s, the city, as we mentioned, developed a more aggressive speed hump in response to requests from the community. The city standard profile was developed uniquely our own, which was kindly referred to as a bump on a hump. As I mentioned, the general traffic engineering standards identify a standard speed hump more in line with the Montgomery County standard profile, which I'll show you shortly. There are over 150 speed humps currently in the city of Tacoma Park. Since 2010, the options for traffic calming have been expanded to include measures beyond speed humps, and I'll provide some examples of that as well. But here to the speed hump comparison, on the left, you see the city standard speed hump designed with a five mile an hour limitation. You can see by the profile there displayed, it really is a bump on a hump. The county standard has a traffic mile per hour recommendation of 20 miles per hour. It's a much more consistent form and shape, and that is the standard speed hump that you see nationwide, internationally. So it has been, while I understand the origins of the city standard was really from residents who are really wanting to slow cars down to a crawl, and the city engineer at the time, that's several city engineers ago, kind of created and developed this particular city standard option. And for many years, communities could request the city standard versus the county standard in terms of their preferred option. It has been the recommendation, particularly since the committee, Safe Roadways Committee and others have gotten involved in reviewing and offering suggestions to the standard, that the city should follow the general traffic engineering standards and consistently install county standard speed humps, which by far have more engineering background, standardization in terms of how they're shaped and how they're designed, and can tend to reduce some of the complaints that we get on more aggressive speed humps. As I mentioned, in 2011, the city added some additional guidelines by city code in terms of sighting locations. They didn't, it didn't exist previously, and so we really felt it was important to let residents know, prior to getting into this situation, what were going to be sort of the guidelines for where speed humps should be. Primarily, they ended up being restrictions on streets with slopes of 8% or more. That's pretty much a national standard. And to not allow speed humps on cul-de-sacs or dead-end streets. Language was added about avoiding driveway aprons and utility access points. There was recommendations made on distances apart, so they should be placed within 150 to 300 feet apart. And that is slightly different to what you see across the country, and that's largely due to the short nature of our blocks and the more compact nature of our community. So that really reflects the right size of Tacoma Park. And that distance to the stop sign be a minimum of 100 feet, and distance to an intersection a minimum of 75 feet. And then a recommendation that street lighting be considered in terms of where the street speed humps are located to improve the sightlines, and also to make sure that the effect of curves and hills and speed humps can be seen within 100 to 200 feet. So that was all established by, and that exists in the city code, and I included that as one of the attachments, that definition in the city code. In terms of traffic calming options, as I mentioned, we've been trying to move away from speed humps into a more broad range of options since 2010 or so. This information is one that we provide to the community anytime we have meetings in regard to traffic calming. You've got sort of three distinct buckets of traffic calming options. The first is the least restrictive, which includes signage, roadway markings, changing to parking, so you can make intermittent parking on, you know, crossing other sides of the street to try to create a little more variability in terms of the roadway width. The moderately restrictive are things like speed humps, speed tables, chicanes, bump outs, reducing the turn radius at corners, and reducing the roadway width. Just by way of definition, chicane, in case it's a word you haven't heard or seen before, is a bump out of the curb. Typically, they go and partner with each other, so if you can consider a block long of a street, a chicane would be placed on opposite sides, a little bump out in the roadway, so that the effect is to narrow the road and require a little more maneuvering on the part of vehicles driving. Chicanes and bump outs are also sometimes used as parking protective barriers, so you can put them at the beginning of a block, and then the parking starts, so it gives a little bit of protection for the back end of cars that might otherwise be parked and sometimes experience damage as a result of cars hitting them.
Do we have any examples of chicanes in Tacoma Park?
Yeah, I think Ritchie Avenue stands as an example of a... Uh, yeah, I think, uh, Ritchie Avenue, uh, stands as an example of, uh, chicanes, a set, a series of bump outs along a, uh, long block of the street. Um, Walnut Avenue is another location where chicanes were placed early on, um, that, uh, are opposite sides of the street and create that, uh, that pattern. Um, a speed table, uh, speed humps, we've obviously defined. A speed table can, uh, is very similar to a speed hump, except it has a larger, uh, larger level on top. So it can be something like a raised crosswalk, which is six to ten feet across, or it can be a- across the entire intersection, where we have an example of that, is at the Tulip and Maple Avenue intersection, where the entire intersection is raised. So speed tables are just a larger, uh, elevated portion of the roadway to try to slow traffic a- as it's passing. And then, of course, the most resp- uh, restrictive options are to change a street to one-way or to implement turn restrictions, and those turn restrictions can be permanent or time-based, you know, rush hour or whatnot. You see turn restrictions, for instance, on Jackson Avenue, just off of Ethan Allen is kind of a more famous one, and there are several streets in Tacoma Park that are one-way, though it's not something that we've, um, implemented, uh, very often because of the impact, um, and the nature that it's oftentimes very hard to get residents to agree to have to drive a longer way around the block, um, with a one-way street. Uh, so I wanted to provide some examples of, um, non-speed hump traffic calming that the city has done, um, just by way of, um, you know, uh, we've talked about a few, but uh, there was a process undergone by the city's planning office, um, in the two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten timeframe, where they identified three neighborhoods uh, to try to, uh, to try to work on a broader neighborhood traffic calming approach versus the sort of one-off, block-by-block, um, pattern that we have historically done. Uh, the city contracted with a traffic engineering consultant, they met with residents on multiple occasions, they did some specific analysis of traffic patterns in terms of speed and volume and location, tried to identify beginning and endpoints which were cut through traffic, which were actually people living in the neighborhood. Um, and they, uh, developed recommendations. Um, that was a very intensive process. Um, Roz could attest, and a former planner, Alana Blanchard, uh, put a lot of, uh, sweat equity in that, uh, that particular exercise. Uh, the end result was that, um, measures were implemented in two of the three neighborhoods where they were, um, approached, but it, it was a, uh, learning experience for all of us, and that was very hard to get, um, neighborhoods to work together on a neighborhood-wide approach. Um, it, it really is very, very difficult, um, because traffic that you've moved from one street inevitably goes to another street, and if you're trying to slow it all down consistently or share the traffic evenly, those streets that might have not had as much traffic and are now going to get more, uh, aren't very happy with the, uh, option. So it proved to be-
I'm sorry, do you mind saying what neighborhoods those, those were?
Oh, sure. One was, uh, New Hampshire Gardens, uh, in Ward Six, the other was the Long Branch Sligo Neighborhood, and I believe the third was, uh, Lincoln Boyd, um, Aspen area.
What, where in the Long Branch Sligo?
The entire neighborhood, uh, Flower Avenue to Garland Avenue, Carroll to Sligo Creek Parkway, so the entire neighborhood.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
The Lincoln Boyd one was one that didn't go through?
No, it was actually Long Branch Sligo.
Okay.
Uh, and, and that ended up kind of in a, in a much unfortunate chain of events resulted in some incredible neighborhood hostility that, haha, we were really disappointed to be part of. It was a very, uh, very contentious and very difficult, uh, process to go through. So it, it's, it's just lessons learned, not that it should be, uh, by any means a stopping point, but it, it really did create, uh, some neighborhood, um, uh, dissatisfaction, which I'm sure, uh, Councilmember Dabala still hears about today. Uh, other examples of some non-speed hump traffic calming included the Ritchie Avenue, uh, area, which, uh, Councilmember, uh, Siemens had mentioned. We've got traffic circles, bump outs and speed humps. That was done in the, uh, fiscal year twelve and thirteen. Erskine Street, we have bump outs of the stop sign that was installed in thirteen and fourteen, and in fact, that's a location where we've installed one, uh, of a pilot program of a lighted stop sign in, in two thousand and twenty. Um, by all accounts, I think it's been pretty well-received, and I often hear from residents who want to know if that pilot's going to be expanded, so that's something we want to consider. It's not cheap by any means. Um, I, it, it has an appropriate use, and the reason we chose that particular location is that's because, well, that's one of the heaviest-traveled non-state highway streets in the city, um, and there was, uh, rampant, um, ignoring of the stop sign. Uh, so we really felt that was an ideal location to test that out. Uh, and it, another project was Flower Avenue and Sligo Creek Parkway, which was a collaboration with Montgomery Parks, where we narrowed the roadway, we eliminated a turning lane, and in fact, that eliminated turning lane became a bioretention facility, uh, that was designed in, uh, fiscal year fifteen, uh, but not installed until fiscal year twenty. Uh, Boston Avenue, where we did a bump out at, uh, adjacent to the playground en- entrance and narrowed the roadway, uh, in fiscal year sixteen. Fifth Avenue, which, uh, bump outs at the intersection, uh, installed in fiscal year eighteen, and Fourth Avenue, where we have bump outs and a raised crosswalk at the intersection, which was done in fiscal year twenty-two. And that's kind of the, um, the nut of the traffic calming piece. I wanted to move on to the sidewalk, uh, request process. Um, and, and first, uh, just wanted to establish again, uh, kind of the for- framework and format that, that, that this was created in. The city created and established, um, this process, um, first in, uh, by resolution in two thousand and ten. It was superseded by a resolution in two thousand and twelve and revised slightly in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, the two thousand and ten, uh, resolution, uh, at that point, the city had hired Tool Design to do an evaluation of existing sidewalks and, and make some recommendations about areas where, um, new sidewalks should be prioritized. They used a tier system where they created a, a, a series of recommendations based on, um, pedestrian generating factors and other, other conditions. There was not, uh, co- uh, cohesive, um, agreement around the criteria that was selected, um, but the city wanted to move forward, so that resolution was established. Uh, the resolution in two thousand and twelve pretty much eliminated that prior resolution and instead established the process that we have today for sidewalk systems, and, and moved away, again, kind of pivoted instead from the broader, uh, organic kind of approach of, of, uh, city or other identifying problem are- problem areas, and instead kind of pivoting to that neighborhood-driven resident request, uh, process that we have in place today. And the resolution in two thousand and fifteen, uh, it, it pretty much maintained almost to the letter each of the, uh, processes within the sidewalk framework, but it did simplify the initiation process. Um, in terms of how the sidewalk request process exists today, uh, resolutions, uh, requests can be initiated in, in one of two ways. Uh, council, council member or city manager, so, uh, more kind of organizationally, uh, or one or more residents or a neighborhood association. And, and that was one of the changes that was made in two thousand and fifteen to identify that a single resident could, uh, initiate a new sidewalk request process. Uh, but the rest of the process, which I'm going to go into detail with, uh, existed in the two thousand and twelve and, and also in the two thousand and fifteen resolution. So once a request is received, uh, the city schedules a community meeting, uh, the city mails notices to the affected area, and that meeting basically provides a lot of general information about the city sidewalk process, what I'm speaking about now, the steps and the votes and the use of a design engineer, uh, so we go through all of that, as well as the frequently asked questions piece, which was also an attachment to your council agenda, so we try to get at many of the questions that residents will have, uh, as they're sort of considering this process. Um, so that meeting is scheduled, and I do want to point out that the affected area, kind of similar to the petition area in the traffic calming process, the effective area for a sidewalk process is defined slightly different. It also is defined as the block or the adjacent blocks of the same street, which is, uh, identical to the traffic calming process. The change, or, or the addition is that it also includes the cross streets. So residents in one block of cross streets to the proposed, uh, sidewalk are able, are included as the effective area and able to voice their opinion, uh, in support or opposition to the sidewalk. And that was a very intentional, um, part, uh, decision made on the part of the council that established that resolution, uh, kind of in the view of sidewalks benefit not only the people that live on that block, but also the people on adjacent streets traveling through that area, and so there was a real, uh, intention to try to widen the number of people that could comment on a sidewalk request process. So once that community meeting is held, the city mails out a, um, a, uh, request for vote, and there's the first neighborhood vote. Uh, it's specific to, uh, whether or not there's support for developing a, a design. And the criteria is that if fifty percent or more of the responses that we receive back are in the affirmative, yes, then the, hm, the request gets moved into the design phase. Uh, and that design development phase is performed by a co- contract engineering firm. Um, they, um, most importantly, do a right-of-way survey, so we know exactly what area we have to work with in terms of either side of the street, where the private property boundaries are. They also do tree inventories, um, utility pole inventories, just a whole general scenario of what exists, um, and they provide and create maps with all that data on it. And then they develop a design using some preference guidelines that the city council has defined previously, and in a future slide, I'm going to go in detail through those preference guidelines. Once, uh, that development process is an iterative process, once the, um, engineering firm completes the survey and develops the options, um, we hold community meetings for co- uh, for residents to review the design, and that's very much a, uh, literal, you know, put maps on the wall, people kind of walk up, write notes, ask questions, the engineers are there, uh, and it's very much a feedback and, and kind of back and forth, um, in terms of what's been, uh, proposed and what people's concerns are. And then that process goes back and forth until we arrive at a point where we feel like we've kind of got a final design, and that is not necessarily a design that everybody agrees with, it's just we've made as many changes and adjustments as we can, and we feel like, uh, we've gotten, um, the design in- into a final state. Once that, uh, has been established, then the second vote takes place, and that is a vote, uh, in regard to construction. Again, the city mails out, uh, letters, uh, to the, uh, residents in the affected area to notify them of the vote. Um, the options for voting in both these votes are, you can vote by email, you can vote by return postcard, or you can vote by, uh, leaving a voicemail message. So we have, uh, kind of tried to cover all, all possibilities in terms of simplification for people's responses. Again, if fifty percent of the responses are yes, the project's moved into the construction queue, and then, um, construction is based on available funding, um, which is established by the council. A couple of caveats, uh, in this process, in the, in the regulations or resolution themselves, the council can override a majority vote of the neighborhood by a majority vote of the council. So, for instance, in the design or community, um, construction process, if the neighborhood, if fifty percent or more of the responses were no, the council could decide, uh, by majority vote to override that and pers- you know, continue to pursue the, um, the process. That has never happened, um, uh, though I think it's been very rare where we've had a process where it didn't go through construction. Uh, but that exists, and again, uh, the intention at the time was tried to provide a way for council to identify equity or overriding safety issues that may supersede the particular concerns of that block or street. It's a very sensitive issue, and I don't touch on it lightly, uh, but we do have cases where there's n- neighborhood concern or a particular concern on a block and things just don't progress. Um, the other caveat is if the sidewalk vote is not approved, goes through the process, the vote is no, it can't be brought up again for a period of two years, and, and that just exists in the, in the resolution. I have this map, and I apologize, it really is difficult to see, but I wanted to show because I was actually quite, haha, quite surprised and pleased myself to take a look at it, uh, for the past eleven years where sidewalks have been installed in the city. And, and I do want to point out that, as I mentioned, the speed hump and traffic calming process has been in place for decades, long, long, long time. The sidewalk process really just established in earnest by the council in two thousand and twelve. Prior to that, there was no procedure for getting sidewalks built in the city. What you got was what you had, there was no funding mechanism, there was no item in the capital budget for sidewalks, it just didn't exist. Uh, so this initiation, this initiative not only established the process, but also created a funding line in the capital budget, uh, for sidewalks, and then each year, the council determines the funding level, uh, for the sidewalks. So you can see, um, that there's been quite a bit of activity, uh, early on especially in Ward Six. Um, there, uh, was extensive sidewalk work done, both on Wildwood and, and Glen Side Drive, um, and, uh, Erskine Street, uh, in particular, um, more recently, uh, the Glen Side, uh, sidewalk. There's also been, uh, extensive sidewalk work in Ward Two, uh, Lincoln Avenue, Boyd Avenue, Jackson Avenue, uh, section of, uh, Old Philadelphia, uh, section of Larch, and then interspersed, uh, also in Ward Three, uh, significant sidewalk activity, and that was really in conjunction with the, uh, Pinecrest Neighborhood Association, which moved those forward. Also in Ward Six, the, uh, New Hampshire Gardens Neighborhood really moved those forward. The New Hampshire Gardens, uh, initial sidewalks were before that process, uh, was requested before we actually had the resolution and the steps in place. But, uh, in terms of Ward Three, uh, Orchard Avenue, Fourth Avenue, um, Allegheny Avenue, uh, a little bit of Sligo Mill, uh, and most recently, we have completed a new sidewalk on Sligo Mill this year, and you see those dotted, dotted lines over in what's now Ward Two and previously was Ward Six. The Hopewell, uh, Kentland Larch area, we intend to, uh, proceed with that sidewalk construction, uh, this fall. Uh, there's a sidewalk, uh, hill, uh, Hilltop Road, uh, that's between Wards Four and, and Six, and a small sidewalk that you can barely see there, that was through the dog park, uh, also in Ward, Ward Four. It's reflective of, uh, a focus on, uh, what residents have asked for. Also, you don't see new sidewalks in Ward One, but that's largely because those streets are almost entirely, it, sidewalk exists not only one side but both sides. So historically, uh, when the community was established, sidewalks were, uh, a part of, of what was built, and they've been there for a hundred years. Uh, it's not a new, new development, but again, because for so much of the past, there was no procedure for getting sidewalks put in, we're now picking it up from two thousand and twelve, and you can see what we've done, uh, in the last, uh, eleven years. I had mentioned that there were some, uh, guideline preferences that were, uh, established, um, in the resolution, and I wanted to go through these because these were, uh, very specific and very particular, and really, I think, reflect, um, a lot of, um, the, um, concerns and, and issues that Tacoma Park residents have. Um, and so there were eleven guidelines that were established for sidewalk preference, and our engineering firms have these and work with these, and this is their kind of guiding documents as they develop the design. First and foremost, to locate the sidewalk in the right-of-way when sufficient right-of-way is available. If not, we have to have an easement agreement with private property owners in order to build or construct across private property. There's only been a couple of cases where we built across private property, most notably Flower Avenue, we had a significant number of properties, um, where we built across the right-of-way for the Flower Avenue Green Street Project, and then Fourth Avenue, uh, was a street where we also were able to get a couple of, um, easement agreements. It's not something that's easily done. Uh, people rarely, uh, willingly and happily provide an easement agreement for the city to construct a sidewalk across what is their private property. Uh, second is consider installing partially or fully within existing pavement. Uh, again, this is pretty much a unique Tacoma Park, uh, flavored, uh, guideline, and that is to reduce the amount of impervious area that we're adding, as well as to reduce private property impacts if a sidewalk is being built partially or substantially on an existing roadway, um, that's already area that's not being used or, uh, experienced by the property owner. Also, to minimize tree removal, as I mentioned, a tree inventory and tree protection method- Also to minimize tree removal, as I mentioned, a tree inventory and tree protection methods are to be used. And another thing we look at is nonlinear sidewalks to accommodate tree space. Again, very unique, most DOT offices want their sidewalks in straight lines. They're really not happy to have a design firm doing zigzag sidewalks around trees. But here, we actually encourage it and promote it, and so that's, you know, that's a learning curve. And of course, any tree that is removed must be replaced per the city replacement criteria in the city code, and is included in the project budget as, as a cost component of the sidewalk itself. There's a preference for putting the sidewalk on the side of the street with the utility poles. The reason for that is that it limits tree plant, it already has a limit on tree planting because of the existence of the overhead lines, and it also may have better street lining. Again, this is not a absolute, it's just a preference stated at the start. Some of the sidewalks we build are not on the side with the utility poles, it really just depends on a number of issues within the street. And of course, the sidewalk planning should be coordinated with other planned utility, traffic safety, or tree planting projects. Additionally, any area impacted by sidewalk construction, which would include private lead walks, retaining walls, vegetation or planting, must be addressed and restored in kind, and that's included in the project budget. It is not a cost that residents are expected to take on, and the city covers that in, in the event that adjustments need to be made. Stormwater treatment mitigation is required as per city code, that really is related to the amount of impervious area that's added. So that's a calculation that the design engineering firm does for us, and if it meets a certain threshold, then we need to identify treatment mitigation for the added impervious area. Sidewalk width must meet the ADA standards, which for us is a five-foot minimum width. It may be wider if specified by master sector or development guidelines, or if it connects to existing wider sidewalks or is needed to accommodate heavy pedestrian traffic. Most of the areas where we're adding new sidewalks tend to be residential streets, so we don't have that need for a 10-foot or, or wider sidewalk. But if we were, for instance, installing sidewalks along a major state road or a commercial area, much more likely that we'd want to look at something larger than five feet. There's a preference for a green strip between the curb and sidewalk when the right-of-way space allows, and a statement in that guidelines that the city is not exempt from sediment erosion control permit or forest conservation plans. And again, that's triggered by the size of the project itself. And I think at the time where these were developed, there was a real, a real concern or interest in making sure that the city was following all the rules that exist for any other type of development.
And, and just a point, just a clarification, this is not in the code? This is not regulations? This is guidelines, or is this in, in administrative regulation?
The design guidelines are in the, in the resolution.
Oh, in the resolution, okay.
Yeah, Section Eight, A through K.
Great.
Yeah, you find it, when you look at, and in fact, it's an attachment to the agenda, the resolution for sidewalks, it, it's a four or five-page-long document, very specific in terms of the process. And Section Eight identifies these guidelines for locations. Lastly, again, a lot of information to try to absorb in a, in a short span of time, but I did want to show sort of the historical expenditures related to both sidewalk design, sidewalk construction, and traffic calming on a year-by-year basis. Again, happy to go in any depth that anybody would like, but, you know, basically, if you look at that map and then you compare to this expenditure, you can see, you know, the years where the expenditures were high and the type of sidewalks that were developed. Obviously, in the early years, FY 12 through 16, a lot of money was spent on sidewalk construction. That was largely in Ward Six in fiscal year 12 and 13. And then in, in fiscal year 14, it also included Prince George's and Jackson Avenue in addition to areas of Ward Six. In fiscal year 15, we pivoted to Ward Three, Orchard Avenue, Boyd Avenue, Fourth Avenue. Fiscal year 16, Elm Avenue, Allegheny, and Cherry Avenue, so bits of Wards Two and Three. And then we had some significant expenditure, again, in fiscal year 20 for sidewalks, and that reflects the Glen Side sidewalk, as well as the Lincoln Avenue sidewalk. And to date, this year, we've so far done Sligo Mill, and as I mentioned, we hope to complete the work on Hopewell. There's a budget of $300,000 for sidewalks this year, and we fully intend to spend all that money. You can also see the impact in 2021 of the pandemic, where at the time, council froze funds, and so that's reflected in there in terms of everything was put on hold and funds were kept in, in, you know, in, in, in the event that something else was needed to be done with those. In terms of traffic calming, we've got some major expenses in fiscal year 13, but primarily, you know, ends up being, you know, 10 to $60,000 a year for traffic calming, and that's largely speed bumps and, and smaller block-by-block corrections fiscal year 13, I think is where we see the Ritchie Avenue sidewalk improvements. Let's see. And lastly, I, I do, did want to, as I mentioned, I'm trying to give the, sort of the historical perspective, how we got here, how we do it, where we are, but also, as Councilmember Dibala pointed out with the information she shared today, there is some interest in council reviewing and determining next, you know, what might, what might you want to change in the process as it exists today. So we have had two kind of very specific points of reference with that. The council established the Complete Safe Streets Committee in 2019, and they provided their report in January of 2020. The bullets I provided there are my own sort of summary, but you've got the document, their full report, as well as their summarized report. But basically, the recommendations, as I understood it, were to simplify the process and a consideration for uniformity, particularly if the traffic calming request process and some of the definitions of affected area differ from sidewalks, there was an interest in trying to make them consistent throughout, to be innovative and cost-conscious. Most important, and I think this is the most important takeaway from the Safe Streets Committee, was to use data-driven, evidence-based criteria in the review of the process, and to balance public input with other priorities. That is trying to get at that issue of what if a neighborhood doesn't want it, but it's on the route to a school? And we have had those cases. So how do you, how do you create a, a way to do that so a neighborhood can't shut down something that has a larger public benefit? And in addition, other priorities, including racial equity, and, and a more holistic approach in planning locations. Our, our approach has really been kind of neighborhood-driven and very individual, block-by-block. And so there is an interest to look at how to incorporate a more holistic, kind of broad-based, maybe perhaps even priority-driven, like the council or the staff would identify, these are our priority areas for traffic calming, based on a series of, of measures. And then that's where we focus our work versus responding as we get requests in. And to provide updated mapping of sidewalk and traffic calming locations and publish those on the city website. That's really a staffing and timing location, issue at this point. We do have the data available, just loaded into GIS and making it, and publishing that is, is a limitation. Though that map that you, that I included for new sidewalks was created by our new construction manager, who's got GIS skills, so maybe we'll inch a little more forward on that. And I've just set him up on a process of updating our traffic calming inventory, so I fully anticipate in the next month or two, we'll have a map with our updated traffic calming locations, which we have never had before. So that'll be a, a great, a great piece of data to have available. And lastly, to establish a budget and set priorities, and I think that was a nod to transparency, to again, to have an agenda set by the council or community where everybody knows this area is our priority, this is where we're going to focus, and here's the amount of dollars we're going to spend on it. And I think there was just an interest in kind of trying to make that a more established process. And then in the prior council, particularly Councilmember Dibala and Councilmember Kosicek in the, in the past, were the moving factors behind Resolution 2022-41, which was called pedestrian transfer safety, transportation safety. And they referenced the recommendation of the Complete Safe Streets Committee. They also wanted to make sure that the city tied into county efforts, including the Action Plan for Vision Zero, the Pedestrian Master Plan, the Reimagine Ride On, and the Bicycle Master Plan. And all I can say is thanks goodness, we have Alex Freeman on our planning office because he's on it. So he is keeping a pulse on those processes and incorporates and connects with us, with the, lets us know what's kind of going on in the county level. Also, the resolution called for a comprehensive approach that prioritizes pedestrian, non-vehicle safety, and emphasizes equity in decision-making. Also referenced the larger geographic areas, working to integrate broader scopes of work. Our past experience in that has shown that it is fraught with problems, but overall, it probably makes sense to, to consider a larger area. And to specifically identify the area for reduced speed limits with the change in the state law, we can reduce speed limits to 20 miles an hour on city streets, and expand the process for initiation requests. And by that, I think it's, it's kind of an acknowledgement that the, whether we want to continue with the petition process can have some problems in an equity and inclusion point of view, as well as the difficulty if you're trying to make a traffic calming request in a neighborhood with apartment buildings. What's the 2/3% of the designers on a petition if you've got several apartment buildings of, of numbers, particularly, as you all have alluded to, the difficulty of getting in those buildings and actually speaking with the residents? So that is, is something that was, was mentioned in, in that resolution. I don't have a great answer for that, but it is something that, we know what we're doing now, and I think going forward in the future, I, I hope that you all have a good sense of kind of where we got to this point. And it's been a very effective tool for, you know, implementing both traffic calming and, and new sidewalk programs. And then going forward, it'll be up to the council to identify those changes in resolution regulation or city code that would alter or improve the process. And we've got a couple of good roadmaps in front of you there for, for things to consider. And with that, that's the end of my presentation.
Great, well, thank you so much. Lot of information, but a lot of really helpful information, and quite frankly, a lot of things that, that we as the council will need to start to tackle. I'll kind of look for lights. Councilmember Gibson.
Carol, remember that I was a part of one of those projects that things just didn't progress on Goody Avenue, partly because we have a very narrow street, and so there were, there was a plan to, to narrow the street further, and I'm awful glad that we didn't do that. So I, I think it just raises, it's an example of one size does not fit all, and being cognizant of slope, narrowness of blocks, you've mentioned trees, telephone poles, all of that. I also, when we, looking at the environmental impact, I, I think we have to consider that sidewalks, which in this context means concrete sidewalks, are a carbon footprint, they increase pollution, they sometimes can worsen stormwater issues. So I would like to have that identified in the environmental impact of, of sidewalks. Sidewalks are necessary, important, where, where, and they need to be used judiciously because, because of the environmental impact that I mentioned. So I'll look forward to talking further, but that's something that, that isn't, it doesn't seem like it's even recognized here, it's not, that there, there might be some negative impacts of, of sidewalks.
Councilmember Dibala?
On, on, on environmental considerations generally, I think that's true, that when there is a negative impact, nobody mentions it. So, so that's fine, because things have, things have impacts and you still want to do them. I had, thank you for this, this has been very informative. I have a couple of technical questions, and then I have a suggestion, which I have not run by anybody yet, about how to proceed. Since, since you see this last slide, talking about taking next steps. But my technical questions first, on the technical guidelines for speed bumps, you, that are in the regulations, do you feel that they're still relevant from an engineering?
Speed bumps?
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, but I'm just checking.
I mean, I, I think if we were making adjustments or opening that up again, it would certainly be staff's recommendation that we eliminate from any installation of prior city-designed speed bump as being not, 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 not in compliance with general traffic engineering standards. So we would want to take a more, you know, official role on that.
So one thing I, I hear, having some experience now in the speed dump, speed hump neighborhood, is about bikes, and I note, noted, I think I noted, this is my second technical question, that the county bumps are 12, 12 feet wide, which is less wide?
No, they're consistent throughout.
They're consistent throughout?
All speed bumps are 12 feet wide.
Okay, so there's not more room on the side for bicyclists?
No, and 12 feet wide is the horizontal, not the longitudinal. So they're six feet up and six feet down.
Oh, okay, all right.
So typically, they, they crest after the curb, so the curb line is, is left at the existing elevation, and then there's a gradual increase up.
So, so with the increase in bicycling in the city as a form of transportation and scooting and all of the other things with wheels, that's the one technical area on speed bumps that, that I'd like to have us look at?
Well, and we've spent a significant amount of time looking at that, and in fact, have presented to council about that. One of the challenges of our, of our roadways is they're 22 to 26 feet wide. And the places where we've seen examples of speed bumps with bike lanes cut in them, which is basically the option that's, that's generally recommended. Unfortunately, because of the width of our street, you end up directing traffic into each other in an unsafe manner. So you, people will tend to drive where the cuts are to get one set of wheels or another, and will crop, and potentially cause a hazard. So it's not been our recommendation, because of the narrowness of our roads, to be able to put a cut in the sidewalk, other than the gutter pan itself for bicycles. It's, it is a, a problem with our, with our design and the layout of our roads, though I do think if in the future we're moving forward to a county standard speed bump, they're much more easily able to be passed by a bicycle than the more aggressive hump-on-a-bump speed bumps that we have in the city.
And as we are moving toward more choices on traffic calming, we're also taking the pressure off of?
Yes, yes.
So I'm glad you explained that technically. I got a note from the vice chair of the Safe Streets Committee, who wanted me to specifically mention the 15 mile an hour speed limit as something to, for the council to, in his estimation, to, to, to consider moving ahead on sooner rather than later.
My understanding is we can go to 20, not 15, maybe I'm missing, misremembering, but I'm?
I thought it was 15. I thought it was 15.
Okay, well, I, I've been at this since 9:00 AM this morning, so my brain's not what it used to be.
So then I won't ask you about, you can go ahead and take this next step on that. I'll just say that I think that I would like to see the council consider forming a subgroup of a couple people to work on just a couple of these recommendations, not try to reform the entire process all at once, but the speed limits and the entire process all at once, but the speed limits and the adding, the expanded process. So we already have well-thought-through, fairly complex processes for sidewalk and traffic safety. And is there another track, so to speak, that we could add that would be more driven by data or by other priorities, by other, not driven, that would be initiated by a look at the data, or by a sense that, you know, this particular place is a problem, because lots of people get traffic tickets there, or whatever it turns out to be?
We tend to have less data for traffic accidents, just because the data is not gathered generally by police departments in terms of non-hazardous accidents. However, I think if, from a staff perspective, where we would, and again, I don't want to speak for the planning department, which has extensive expertise in this, but I think school zones and areas around school zones, half a mile around school zones, would definitely be top of our priority in terms of ensuring that those streets have sidewalks to enable students to leave their house and walk to school on a consistent sidewalk. And if that, you know, if the city were to, you know, take a kind of priority-setting approach, and maybe in conjunction with individual requests, to try to identify sort of where our priorities areas would be, certainly school zones would be one that we would advocate. And then access to transit options to make sure there's a sidewalk accessing every transit option, and by that I mean bus stop. So make sure there's consistent sidewalks. And we've made some great improvements in that regard, so we've got a lot of that already underway. But I do know we have some gaps in the safe routes to school related to school zones.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, man, wish Alex was here, because there's also the draft pedestrian master plan that he's been working on to get us some comments in terms of helping me with developing a response to that. You know, so I think that there is a growing amount of information that we can leverage from the perspective of the county, at least keeping, you know, their crash on state roads, right? So a lot of the fatality data, in particular, like University Boulevard, we know that's a problem. We know that there's some Piney Branch up near Ward 5 is a problem. We know New Hampshire Avenue over near, I believe is Larch. There's a number of places that you can kind of see from the state roads where there's an issue. There was explicitly called out, I believe in one version of a county pedestrian plan, areas in, particularly in Ward 6, leading around some of the Purple Line Station and connectivity there, and making sure that those sidewalks are continuous, which is more or less an issue. Making sure that there's continuous sidewalks leading up to those places, and kind of thinking strategically about how people would naturally move into those kinds of locations for public transit. I think too, when it comes to thinking through priorities for where sidewalks should be, I think the routes to school are important. The, also just thinking about other types of amenities, I think one of the things that has been so transformative about having the Glen Side sidewalks that we have, is how it connects you to the park, right? How it makes your walk so much easier to get to the Long Branch Trail, to get to Sligo Creek. It connects you to amenities in a way that's a lot safer, especially because of the amount of traffic that was around. So as we're thinking about what are some of the connectivity points that we want to make sure that we're prioritizing access for people to have, thinking about safe routes to school, public transit, various amenities in the community that we know people are going to want to walk to, and then how can we make sure that there's an easy access for them? Because I do recall when the park and planning was planning their revamp of Long Branch, and they're doing work there, one of the things they highlighted was the fact that we had these sidewalks on Glen Side that would ultimately connect their users to other aspects of the creek that aren't easily accessible, because the trail ends, right? So I do think that, you know, as we are thinking through sidewalk priorities and locations, and kind of if we want to take that less of a resident-driven and more of a data-driven, priority-access-driven approach, and kind of thinking about those direct amenities that we know people are going to want to access, and making sure that they take a healthy safety perspective, we want to make sure that they're able to easily access those amenities would be a priority.
So, yes, and what's the next step for us on this? Is it to have a small work group to move, to work on a draft of something?
Karen and I are both like, yes, we would be interested in that.
Well, and you may want to flush that out in your priority-setting session that you're going to be undertaking in the next several weeks.
A little bit, because I do know that this was an issue that came up quite a bit when we were talking through our priorities. I think it would be helpful for, like, don't lose that momentum, right? Because I'm going to need volunteers.
Okay. So when we are able to set up a work group, it sounds like we've got volunteers.
We've got volunteers. But I would encourage folks, like, as we're preparing for our priority-setting discussion...
Make sure that's highlighted.
That that is highlighted. And now that, folks, we've had this conversation, if you want to go back and take a look at some of those traffic-related items that was included in the list of priorities, and if you want to make any tweaks, now would be a good time for us, so that when we are having this work session, and we're kind of walking through the, and discussing the modifications, we can have a better idea, better sense of where people want to go. Because I know at the time, we talked about the sidewalk petition process, I think it was something that was included, like Vision Zero was always something that was a priority for us. But I think that this discussion gives a little bit more in terms of actions that we could potentially take.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I'm especially interested in the reduced speed limits, but everybody already knows that. Thank you.
Councilmember Fulcher?
I know that you had the sidewalk expenditures by Ward, or do we have the traffic calming expenditures by Ward?
Yes, that third column. Oh, not by Ward, in terms of location?
Yeah, because the, yeah, because, yeah, sorry, by location.
I could provide some general information based on what I've got there. As I mentioned, I'm hoping in the next month or so to have locations on a GIS map for where our speed humps are and where our bump outs are. But I could, I'm happy to provide sort of a rundown of those 11 years, what we did with the traffic calming money, in terms of, you know, a written response to you.
That was something that came up in like the report, sorry, I'm tired and it's late. What's the name of the committee that made the report?
Committee, yeah, Committee for Safe Streets.
So...
CSSC?
Yeah, CSC. That was one of the things that came up, was that you were limited in resources for charting a lot of this GIS stuff. With the position that's filled now, do you feel that you have the resources to plot more of this?
Yeah, I do believe we'll be able to. Again, it may not happen as quickly right now, we're sort of downtime. Come March, our construction manager is going to be full in construction management oversight of the sidewalk on Hopewell and our last street restoration program. And so, but right now, we've got sort of the sweet spot of winter where we can oftentimes do a lot of that work. So I'm hoping in the next month, we have made some progress on that.
And I was just wondering about the cutouts for the bikes. I know that the sheroes sort of had mixed reviews. Places where there are sheros, where bikes are kind of using one side of the road, is it easier to make a, is it possible to make a cutout if we know that bikes are on one side and not the other? Or is just down the middle what people usually do for the cutout?
I'm not sure I'm understanding. A shero is sort of the definition of a thermoplastic design on a triangular marking on a speed hump. The issue with cutouts for bikes, it typically is mid-lane, and so what you end up doing is cars end up adjusting so that they drive with one set of tires through the middle of the lane, which puts them across the center line and into the potentially oncoming traffic.
What I was trying to say is with the sheros, we're sort of denoting that bikes travel a certain direction.
Oh, gotcha.
So are we able to match up, like, cutouts with sheros?
Yeah, we don't have, I mean, we do have sheros installed on, I believe, Cedar Avenue and a portion of Maple Avenue. I think that's the only place where we've done the bike lane work. I know the planning office intends to add additional bike sheros. Sorry, I misunderstood your reference to the bike sheros. So that would, you know, we could certainly take a look at areas where we've identified a bike lane, and if there are speed humps in that location, how we might best accommodate a cutout in the speed hump in order to enable bikes to more easily pass through without creating, you know, potential traffic.
Yeah, I appreciate your concern about that crazy idea that, yeah, that the cars would both be going for that spot, that's bad.
And where I've seen it is where you've got really, really wide two lanes plus parking lane, you know, roadway widths we don't have in Tacoma Park.
Right. So I know that we're trying to catch up with the ADA, trying to be ADA compliant. How often does stuff like that change? You know, like, are we going to complete this? And then, like, when was the last time it changed before the one that we're currently trying to catch up to?
I think it's, I think it's a new, I mean, it's, the law has been in existence for probably a decade or more, but was getting more strong and more attention paid to it. Our efforts have really, were started in 2010, 2011 with the ADA sidewalk improvements. So we're about 87% through the city in terms of ADA work. I can give you a presentation on that too, but it's not included in this evening. So we're close to completing the entire city existing sidewalks to make them ADA compliant.
Hopefully, there's no new changes anytime soon.
Well, yeah, I don't anticipate that there will be, just in terms of, you know, in terms of cross slope, in terms of, you know, I don't see that stuff changing. There could potentially be more strength in language about the width of sidewalks, but in existing cities like ours, I mean, typically, we build new sidewalks at five feet, all our existing sidewalks are four feet. We're not trying to, in our ADA work, expand the sidewalk width to five feet. It just would be particularly challenging with, again, our narrow right-of-ways. The biggest issue with our, where we see ADA work needing to happen is, you know, we've been at this since 2010, so the streets that we did, the sidewalks we did in 2010, still have some, you know, have some issues that have come up since then. Trip hazards, tree root intrusions, those kinds of things. However, our process is that when we do street work, and this is what existed prior to the ADA work, when we did street work, we addressed any bad issues on sidewalks or curbs. So we'd go, when we were doing road restoration, we'd look and make sure the curbs were in good shape, we'd fix any cracked or heaved sidewalks. So we anticipate that that will be the process that we'll follow going forward. And our roads are on a, like, a 20-year cycle in terms of restoration. So the assumption is that every 20 years, we're going to be touching back with each of those areas where we've done work. And beyond that, you know, people can make reports or let us know if there's significant issues with trip hazards or other things, and we can incorporate them in repair work on an as-needed basis. But the assumption is that the ADA work that we've done is really going to be sufficient to meet the intention of the law.
And my last question is, after a sidewalk or a traffic calming measure has been approved, about how long does it take to start a project?
Usually a year or two. Really sort of depends, we, this particular year, and again, partly because we had this slow up from the pandemic, we really, we had like three or four projects together. We've got Domer Avenue, Hopewell, Kentland Larch, Sligo Mill, there's another one out, oh, Belford Place. So, you know, we've never had that many sidewalks all at one time in design. So they tend to sort of be paced out a little better, but because we had that sort of two-year delay, we really kind of created a number of sidewalks that could proceed to construction and...
And the engineering firm is helping you come up with the design, is Public Works actually doing the work of installing the sidewalks?
Yes, our on-call contractor. The process that we use, we have, we use county contracts for the engineering firms, and we've been working with them since 2010. The council at that point established three firm, that we could hire three different firms, and then spread the work around. No matter how many times we try to keep three firms, we've only got two, we'll select a third firm, and then we'll decide we don't like them, or they'll sort of fizzle out. So we've really had two major engineering firms that we've used for quite a few of our projects. They're very familiar with the process, Whitman, Reichert, and Associates, and Rommel, Klepper &amp; Call. We've been very satisfied with their level of focus, intensity, customer service, ability to respond to residents in the meetings. They've been a really good match with the city. So they do the design development work. The city has a five-year on-call contract for concrete, asphalt, stormwater projects. And so every five years, our bid, our contract goes out for a bid again, and then we select a vendor. So NZI is the construction contractor that we've had for quite some time. I think they were our last five year, plus this five year, and I think we're a year or so more before we get to the five-year end. In addition to that, we do hire the engineering firm to do construction oversight for the ADA work. So the firm that is doing the sidewalk design, they're, you know, proficient in ADA compliance. So they, when we're doing ADA work, they have an onsite inspector who's there whenever our construction is taking place, taking measurements, making sure that the work is being done to meet the compliance guidelines. And that's a real critical piece, because you don't want to spend all this money and then not have it be compliant. So we really rely on that ADA inspection analysis to make sure we're getting what we intend to get.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Haldau?
Thank you, Director Braithwaite. I know it's getting very late, I'm feeling it. So sorry, one of the last ones to ask some questions. I guess I have two major buckets. One is, I really love the map that your construction manager put together, showing over the last 10 years or so where the sidewalks were placed. But I would, and maybe this exists, I would also really love to see a map of where sidewalks do not exist across the city. I guess by contrast to Councilmember Gibson, my primary concern is an equity one, and I'm not saying that's not your consideration, but in terms of an environmental one, I really want us to prioritize, not, say, taking away sidewalks and spending money, therefore, I understand your point, but making sure that every street in Tacoma Park has got at least one sidewalk running down one side of it that is accessible by residents. And I don't know whether that's a fact or not. I know that that's really of concern to me in Ward 5, and it made such a difference in the quality of life of all, of so many people, of not of means and without voice in our government at the moment. On Flower Avenue, when we built that sidewalk down Flower Avenue, women are walking with bundles, and men with laundry on their heads, and they are now walking on a sidewalk instead of dodging cars. I mean, I just can't tell you what a big difference it makes. So, oops, my screen disappeared, excuse me.
Yes, we did have a historic map that Tool Design did of existing sidewalks, and then kind of the tier priority setting for which, you know, missing sidewalks, and based on a tier, it ended up being very complicated to be able to read. So I take your point, we can certainly make an attempt at identifying streets without sidewalks.
Yeah, it's like a map with one and two, you know, one or both sides, maybe a green and a yellow, you know, something like that, that could be fairly easily readable by residents too, so advocacy can take place where needed. too. So advocacy can take place where needed would be fantastic. I know unlimited resources, limited staffing. But I think that might, in some ways, to me, to me, anyway, we can talk among council, but I think that might be more valuable in the short run in some ways than than where we've spent the resources, because there's there's all sorts of equity questions, you know, that are useful there, but this might help us focus. And then, and I think the same would be true because of what I've been hearing on the on the campaign trail, and still, it's coming in constantly, people who typically aren't aren't that savvy about knowing how to go about getting, you know, calming measures, traffic calming measures are saying, please, Kara, won't you do something about this? So it'd be a map of where we don't have calming measures in place on streets. And and obviously, we ideally, we would match that up with data on pedestrian safety and car safety and such. But I just think that that kind of information would be oh, so valuable to council in terms of equity and safety and well-being, human well-being. And and then I guess my second bucket is more complicated and maybe requires some sort of resolution, but maybe you have some other suggestions. As you know, Ward Five is full of narrow streets going down to the creek from Flower. And and I, and and there, there are a lot of challenges. We don't have sidewalks on every one of those streets. Thus, Domer Avenue has come to play. However, I have a lot of concerns about the narrowness of those streets and the balance of where we make the calls on ADA compliance, how steep the grade is, how our our vehicles are conflicting with one of the residents are conflicting with one another. I just want to give an anecdote. I just was on Domer, at the bottom of Domer Avenue on a day when the bottom was closed off, and I suddenly got my very own taste of just how bad it is. I literally had to back up Domer around a blind curb in the dark, and a big truck came up behind me. And I had no place to go. He had no place to go. And I thought, oh, my God, we're going to make this street narrower? Whoa, we better rethink something. And I, and I know this is, I haven't experienced it that much, but just one street over from me, this is also very much the case on Houston Avenue, where people are regularly, you know, like, I mean, practically popping each other's tires with anger about the the amount of conflict that is created on these narrow streets. So I don't know. I guess I'm just throwing that out there, like, what do we do as council and with you and with others in the city staff to think about these, these particularities of different pieces of neighborhood so that it's not just a go, no-go? Like, you know, I saw the procedures here. Council can say no, and if we say no, then, you know, we don't consider it again for two years. Well, ideally, we have a more collaborative process thereby that empowers you and your department to have more, you know, more brain power that can come to bear to to solve these really pretty, intractable, difficult, complex problems with the big picture in mind. Do you have some thoughts on that? And I welcome other other council members, too, on what we could do or, you know, do we need a committee? Do we, is that already happened or?
Oh, it it has already happened, but it is a real challenge. In my, in my years of working with neighborhoods on, you know, and experiencing real differences of opinion in terms of what's safe and what's not safe, what would improve and what not improve relative to sidewalks or speed humps, you don't want to get a particularly riled up group of people ask for a vote on whether speed humps are good or bad, and you will have really strong opinions, one side or the other. Nobody's neutral about it. So it's a real challenge for a neighborhood to work through these things. In a, in a perfect world, the way you approach it is a broader neighborhood-based, and you have to take a look at the more, some of those more restrictive options, like one-way streets. If you've got a roadway that's particularly narrow, where you're having a lot of conflicts, if you would turn that into a one-way street, you would eliminate a huge portion of the source of the conflict, because cars wouldn't be coming at each other trying to get around and move around parked cars. What that means is, of course, then everybody has to reorient themselves in how they get to their house. And and those have to be in tandem. You have to have one-way street on one street and the opposite on the other. So you have to, you have to design them together and as part of a neighborhood-based approach. It's a real challenge to get community agreement on those kinds of things, because people first think of what, how it's going to impact me personally, and then, for some, have a broader approach on, you know, what what may be helpful in the long term. But, you know, it's a collaborative approach. It's a slow-go approach. It's a discussion with the community and continuing to gather data and layout options. As I mentioned, we haven't had a, I can't think of one, we've made recommendations for one-way streets before, but I don't think we've had any that have been incorporated, at least in my tenure. We've certainly had streets that are one-way in in the city. But I think that's an approach that, you know, kind of may be the most extreme, but would certainly alleviate traffic congestion on those roadways that are very congested, particularly when you add curb-to-curb parking. Because the other option is to eliminate parking, but that's not an option in places where they don't have driveways and the ability to park elsewhere. So we're sort of stuck with the parking. The city's effort at permit parking was a way to try to regulate and manage parking in streets that were getting inundated with parking from folks who couldn't park where they lived. But, you know, it does take a more drastic approach to get to a solution in some of those issues. We also, just by the nature of the city, have very narrow right of ways in in most of the in most of the city. So the city doesn't have a lot of control over this area that we that we can manage. No easy answers, but they they do exist. It just is a real, it's a real hard sell.
Thank you. I just want to, I just want to kind of try to imagine what we could do next. I I I want to highlight for the mayor and for you, Director Braithwaite, I would really like to see something done. I'm sure there are other wards that need this, too, but for sure, just from the south all the way to the north side of of Ward Five in particular, and I anticipate somewhat increased traffic, at least anticipate increased foot traffic, if nothing else, over time with purple line. And somehow, we need some sort of, like you've described, collaborative approach. I would welcome a dialogue with the mayor or others about what we as council could do to support that kind of process and enable it.
I know that in, like, my mom used to live on Central, and that for a while they were considering like a roundabout there. I wonder if there's a way, and they just put like a temporary roundabout there. I wonder if there's a way to do a temporary one-way street situation to see if residents can be open to it, if they can see that it's helpful and maybe more be open to it.
Yeah, that's it. We we have had a lot of success with modeling things and putting it in in a temporary way. It helps to bring down the anxiety some for folks that just can't imagine what that change would mean. So and and I know we've had cases like in Mayor Cersei's neighborhood where there was a request for a bump out. We we marked it out. We put out the cones, and people said, oh, no, 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 we don't want that. So it's a very helpful, it can be a very helpful approach. You know, the challenge with a one-way street is, you know, you got to sign it like it's a real one-way street. So it's a little more permanent than temporary. You know, it's not traffic cones. It's it's a real distinction. But I think working with neighborhood associations and kind of trying to start that collaborative approach.
Yeah, this is our challenge. Yeah, but anyway, I don't want to, I don't want to hang out in that space. I just, I I'm trying to figure out what what I can do to further the process procedurally and generate a collaborative process of some sort that goes way bigger than you or me could do on on our own.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to work with, to work with you, Councilmember Mahonzak, and it's a way for us to kind of sit down with residents, because there are, you know, for example, the Hopewell Larch neighborhood doesn't have like an official neighborhood association. But there were a group of residents that did come together to to push. So it can be done. It could be, it could be contentious now, like the the sidewalks. I mean, if you want to touch on something that could be very sensitive and divisive in a community, try to put in a sidewalk. And so it is a longer process. But I do think that bringing those residents together, it can be very, very useful. I think in some of our neighborhoods where I know for for Ward Six near the Tacoma Langley, one of the biggest challenges is planning for traffic calming when you're dealing with crazy construction-related traffic patterns, which makes it very difficult to anticipate what you may need to do. Right now, for example, Erskine and Wildwood are just the alternate routes for University Boulevard. That's what people are doing to try to avoid the construction areas. And so do you start to build necessary traffic calming and mechanisms and stop gaps now when there's construction happening? You don't know what it's going to look like when it's finally done? Or do you try to wait and see what some of those traffic patterns will ultimately evolve into and then develop your traffic calming approaches based on that? But I, so I think that, you know, for for Councilmember Mahonzak and I, when we're dealing with like construction cut through and people just doing weird things right now, just because of construction that's happening around, it creates another challenge. But I think in the Domer, because I think I did have some, while I was out campaigning Award Five, I, a few residents did mention, and that is a quite narrow street, like, it's narrow and very steep. So it definitely will require just bringing residents together with city staff to see if there's some potential.
I do, I do think, Mayor, if I may, I think it's the, I think it's, it will in many ways be more effective in a neighborhood such as Ward Five, where you have high levels of poverty, you know, not high levels of civic engagement by those who are maybe most impacted by some of the changes in particular, and I'm saying those, those folks who aren't necessarily voting or coming in here to talk. If we're using data to drive some of those processes, we're definitely going to do more to 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 make more positive impact and say, you know, we can see from a planning perspective, we've got three very narrow streets, and we've got, I don't know, whatever, we're we're missing sidewalks. These are some of the criteria that we need to do from a planning perspective as a city. And, you know, after we walk through all of that data, then we bring in the residents to the process of the therefore, but with some ideas laid out because of that. These are some of the things we're considering because of the equity considerations and because of some of the challenges we're seeing. Our trucks can't get through, mail trucks can't get through, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, we've also got three days a week. We've got all of that blocked off. So it creates a whole different traffic pattern than what used to exist for people, I mean, when I moved in, for people to have to move around all of that. So it's very, very tricky. And I, and I think it requires a bird's eye approach with data if, again, and I'll stop there. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, in full, in full agreement, and and you've heard this from me before, we have a one city engineer that's split between store water and city engineering and a construction manager who's equally split. We're sorely in need of additional on-staff engineering support for traffic calming, for sidewalks. Basically, the traffic calming process is done by myself, the community meetings, the mailings, the solicitation, you know, we just don't have the person power to to expand much beyond what we're currently doing.
I see Deputy City Manager, it's your light on?
Yes, I just wanted to add, for the interest of council and the community, we have a resource online called a Streetscape Manual. It was last updated in 2021. And it does have some mapping. There's a map on where traffic bumps are across the city and what type. And it has, you know, some various things like that. It does not have a complete sidewalk map. I know we had talked about it over the years, so I'm not sure why that didn't make the final one. It might have been too hard to figure out how to depict all the information graphically. But if you drop in Streetscape Manual into the search engine, it'll, it will take you right there, and you can see more of what what's already installed. And Daryl, we should probably talk about updating it.
Yeah, that's great.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, it's it's late, so maybe this can be handled another time. But we've talked about, you know, nude sidewalks and new traffic calming. A question that I have been asked is, is the process for prioritization and scheduling of repairs of sidewalks that need that need to be repaired? And it's a little unclear to me if there's a prioritization, and then when you get, and then when do you actually get scheduled if if you meet whatever criteria is there?
Well, I I don't know what level of repair you're requiring. If you're talking about a trip hazard or a cracked sidewalk.
Well, like the Boyd, the Boyd Alley is one example. Also, the the gentleman who has floods go into his yard on Gooty Avenue, I would call that a repair issue.
Yeah, the, those two situations particularly, we've identified the Boyd Alley issue as one that would have to be included in the capital budget. It's not an ADA. It's not a repair per se. There's nothing technically wrong with what was constructed.
Except for cars break, lose their catalytic converter going over it.
Yeah, it's been in place for over 10 years. So it's a situation that has has been around for a while. So the council can choose to fund that, and and that'll certainly be an option coming up. In the past, we've had it not make the budget in the past two years. So this is upcoming budget where that could be included. Gooty Avenue really is, as you know, it's an ADA compliance thing. When when we move forward with the ADA compliance on that sidewalk, we can address the flooding issue.
I I disagree with this one particular property, which gets flooded, whether we have ADA compliance or not for the rest of the block. But.
Right, we have to change the curb ramp, which is, in order to do that, you have to make the sidewalk compliant.
Or remove a telephone pole or something. Anyhow, it's something that's a serious, serious issue for one resident, and we don't need to do the whole block to make it ADA compliant to to deal with that, in my opinion.
Right. We we are required when we make repairs to be consistent. So when we are doing a repair, we have to, you know, we can't make something, address some and not all. So our our practice has been, when we're making repairs on a sidewalk or a block, that we do the entire area.
Well.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, one, one more question, because it keeps coming up. Perhaps you can send to us whatever there is to read about ADA guidelines that you have to comply with.
Yes, we have a state highway manual, and then we have our our agreement with our our compliance engineering firm, which they specify, which I can send that to you. I can tell you it's not an easy read. It's an engineering document. So I don't know that it will add particularly much to the.
Yeah, but I'd like to give it a go.
Yeah. I have provided that in the past to council members and residents. I'm happy to provide it again. It's a fairly technical document.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, and and I will echo, because I know with the Glen Side project, there was a lot of people who wanted those engineering documents. And I tried, I couldn't get past the first paragraph. But if there are people, you might make it to the second paragraph. The, one thing that I do want to bring up is, first, thank you so much for, because I mean, we're knocking at 11:00 PM. But, you know, one of the things that I know in the series of sidewalk projects that has been done in Ward Six is how we've been able to turn those projects and work on other major issues that have been plaguing the community. So the Glen Side sidewalk projects, for example, one of the things we learned through that process is that, you know, well, we should have known, we're a flood plain, but man, that water was just coming down to people's homes at the bottom of Glen Side. And so as part of the sidewalk project, able to install the necessary stormwater mechanisms and drainage systems and has really just transformed flooding for so many residents in the community. But it required doing, to the point that was raised earlier, more area, not less, right, to be able to really redirect the water in the ways in which it needed to be redirected. So it's, you know, those are some of the things, like with Hopewell and Larch, the ability to have the sidewalk continue through Prince George's County as a way to improve those connectivity. So I do want to commend your office for not just thinking about, you know, while the tripping hazards are important, but if you're going to bring those engineers and bring the trucks out to do something, let's make sure that we're fixing. and bring the trucks out to do something, let's make sure that we're fixing as much as we can in one fell swoop versus having contractors come out to kind of piecemeal certain things. Yeah, it's, it's, it, people may not like it, but it's actually the more cost-effective approach to doing. Yeah, the multiple visits. It's better to just coordinate and get it all done and figure out all of the things you need to get done and get all of the engineering in place and get people to vote once and, and, or twice, uh, according to the process. It, it, it does, it's painful, but it's more ripping the Band-Aid off versus kind of trying to do things in a piecemeal way. So I do appreciate the fact that you all have, have taken that approach. And I do think that as we're thinking about, um, uh, future sidewalk projects, sidewalk design, and, um, that we are thinking through some of those bigger pictures and ways in which, um, our sidewalk and the infrastructure projects that we're undertaking may have other ramifications such as stormwater, and how we may be able to put some of these public works projects together in a way that makes sense. So, you know, the fact that we were able to do this, uh, stormwater work alongside aspects of the Hillwood Manor Playground, like those kinds of things, um, really can have some pretty substantial impacts on how we're able to address some of these larger standing issues, particularly as it pertains to stormwater. So thank you so much for that. So I don't see any more lights, and I'm not going to keep talking, given that it's 11 o'clock. But I thank you so much, um, for, for sticking it out with us and explaining this process. And, um, I know that we'll probably send lots of questions after the fact as folks are going through the materials and we're working with you on some of these, um, longstanding sidewalk issues like Domer Avenue. But thank you so much. Okay, all right. One more item, y'all, we're almost there. All right, so the last work session we have tonight is our recom, um, Subcommittee. We'll be, um, discussing, um, recommendations in terms of board and committee, um, appointments. So with that, um, I'm going to turn things over to Councilmember Fulter.
And I'm allowed to go real fast, right? Okay, um, and so most of the recommendations were made last week, and we just needed to finish up two other committees, which was Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee and COLTA, the Commission of Landlord Tenant Affairs. We, uh, so the appointments, um, are Samuel Bryson, Jeffrey Hopkins, and Faith Agbana for COLTA. And then for Nuclear Free Tacoma, we have Adam Frank and William Allen Duprah. We had a pretty good age variation in applicants, um, but this time it was not as diverse with race and ethnicity. So please go out and find constituents to get them to apply for next time so that we don't end up with majority white applicants the way that we did this time. And, yeah, a note to the NFC, uh, they're still, um, they're still below the number that they need to have in order to have a full committee. And so, uh, we've asked them to continue to work hard on, um, on recruitment so that they can continue. Um, and we will make recommendations, uh, for them soon about, uh, the changes we would like to see.
Great. Well, I, um, wanted to, um, thank, uh, the Subcommittee, um, Councilmember Fulter, Mahonzak and Dabala for your leadership on this effort. Having done it, I know that it is never easy to go through, um, uh, all of the, the different applications and have to make hard choices around selecting people. So I appreciate all of the hard work that you all have put in. I also want to thank all of the residents that have agreed to volunteer their time and their talents to serve the city. It's, it's, it's so important that we have, um, your feedback as a community in terms of, um, all of these important issues that we have to address. And, um, I'm very appreciative of those that have volunteered their time. And so if there are no other questions or comments, all right, we, we're just two minutes after 11:00. So thank you all so much, and I move to adjourn this meeting. Thanks so much, have a good night.